I'm just about to open up the meeting so that we can then go and vote to go into executive session. Seeing quorum, the chair opens up the Wednesday, February 5th, 2025 session of the Mashpee Planning Board, being held at Mashpee Town Hall, Wacoia Meeting Room, 16 Great Net Road North, Mashpee, Massachusetts. Our public session will be broadcast live on channel 18 and channel 1072. The meeting will be recorded and rebroadcast, also streamed, this is the public session, also streamed on Town and Mashpee website, www.mashpema.gov backslash channel dash eight. There is a Zoom link on our agenda for the public session only. I've called the session to order. I declare regarding the item of executive session that's on our agenda, I declare as chair that discussing the matter of Southworth Mashpee Properties versus Town and Mashpee Planning Board, Massachusetts Land Court case number 24 miscellaneous 000327 in Prenz HPS. If discussed in open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the board. I also declare as chair that discussing the matter, the open meeting law complaint filed against the planning board by Wendy Williams dated January 7th, 2025, that discussing that matter in open session may have a detrimental effect on the board. So now I will take, entertain a motion and to go into executive session regarding those two items.
動員
By roll call vote, Michael?
Yes.
Mary Wagen, aye?
Yes.
Dennis? Dale?
Aye, yes.
Karen?
Yes, aye.
Okay, Karen Faulkner, and we'll put that in the minutes that she's participating via the Zoom link. Okay, so we are in executive session.
Executive session, why is that showing up?
Because it's still an executive session, I think.
They're way too loud.
Well, I clicked the thing that's on the agenda. It says to join the public session by Zoom, hit blah, 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 nine, three, three, three.
Is there a way to turn them down just a little or not?
Try, yeah. Karen, can you hear us?
I do.
Ed?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay.
Ed and Karen, can you hear Mary? Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Bottom clear.
Very good, clear. Thank you.
Okay, so, um, let's see, Mashpee TV, are we streaming? Okay, so we're broadcasting. Again, this is the meeting of the Mashpee Planning Board, Wednesday, February 5th. The meeting started at 6:30 and went into, we went into executive session. It's approximately 7:25 now. We're being, uh, the meeting is being held at Mashpee Town Hall, Lacoit Meeting Room, 16 Great Neck Road North in Mashpee, being broadcast live on local channels eight and 1072. The meeting is being recorded and it'll be rebroadcast. Also being streamed live at Town of Mashpee website, www.mashpma.gov backslash channel dash eight. There is a Zoom link on our agenda, if you so dare. I believe our agenda is on our webpage, correct, Mr. Tobin?
Yes.
Yes, so we got our agenda up on the Town of Mashpee webpage for the Planning Board, not the Planning Department, the Planning Board, bottom right, if you want to, uh, join by Zoom. I will be taking public comment via Zoom, so if you're at home and you want to public comment on this, jump on the Zoom link and I will recognize you. Okay, so, um, just to let you know, we're gonna, we're gonna do the Pledge of Allegiance, we're gonna do the minutes, we're gonna jump to our 7:20, um, hearing. That's being continued, okay? And then we'll go back to our 7:10. So you can always go to something after the appointed time, you can't go before. So I'm sorry that we're taking things a little bit out of order, but right now I would like to invite everybody to stand with me and recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation under one principle, limited any more than just liberty and justice.
Excellent. We have a set of minutes from January 15th, 2025. I read them, I thought they looked good. Is there any comments on them?
I move, we accept them as written.
Mike, okay, there's a first and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 I think there was somebody that wasn't here, so we'll have Dale abstain.
Abstain.
Okay, great. Do we have the public hearing notice for the 7:20? Does anybody have the public hearing notice for the 7:20?
Newspaper notice, usually they read that.
Looking for it now.
Are you able to access that via your phone or do you need?
I can try, why don't you try to beat me to it?
Let me see it.
Are you looking for the?
Public hearing notice for the 7:20. Did you take, did you bring that with you?
Is it the last one you read?
Yes.
I have it here.
For Southworth?
Yes.
Would you please read that into the record for me, Karen?
Certainly. This notice is given pursuant to the requirements of Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 48, Section 11, regarding a public hearing to be held by the Mashpee Planning Board under provisions of Mashpee General Law, Chapter 48, Section 9, on Wednesday, December 18th, 2024, at 7:10 PM at the Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road North, to consider on remand from the Land Court, special permit modification application from Southworth Mashpee Properties LLC, property owner, to modify the Willow Bend Hundred Club special permit. The applicant proposes to construct 12-unit single-family cottage community immediately contiguous to the Willow Bend Golf Course at 275 Quinnicwist Avenue, map 69, block 32. The existing single-family dwelling is proposed for demolition. With these changes, the total unit count for the Willow Bend project be increased to 287, if the Board authorizes the annexation of 275 Quinnicwist into the Willow Bend special permit. 287 dwelling units is the maximum number of dwelling units authorized under the special permit. All units will be connected to and served by the existing privately-owned wastewater treatment plant, which serves the entire Willow Bend project, submitted by Mary P. Wagon, Chair of Mashpee Planning Board.
With that reading into the record, the Chair opens up the 7:20 public hearing. The applicant is Southworth Mashpee Properties LLC. The address is 275 Quinnicwist Avenue. The request is a special permit modification. We received a letter dated February 5th, 2025, addressed to the Mashpee Planning Board from Jack McElhany, who is the attorney for Southworth Mashpee Properties LLC. It says, "Mr. Tobin, who is our town planner, Southworth Mashpee's LLC respectfully requests that the public hearing relating to its special permit remand application currently scheduled for tonight be continued to March 5th, 2025, to the March 5th, 2025 meeting. Thank you for your attention regarding this matter." So I entertain a motion to continue this public hearing to March 5th, 2025. I think there is nothing on the agenda right now, so we would be safe to schedule it for 7:10 that night.
So be.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, by roll call vote, because Karen is remoting in, Dale?
Aye.
Dennis? Mary Wagon, aye.
Aye.
Michaels, an aye. Karen, are you aye?
Aye.
Okay, so just in general, when something is continued, we don't take public comment that, that, that night. We will take public comment March 5th, after I open it up, the meeting again at 7:10. So I apologize for anybody that came out tonight to hear that, but we're continuing it to March 5th, okay? Next ma, next item. Seeing that the time has arrived, the Chair opens up the 7:10 public hearing, excuse me, public hearing. The applicant is William Russell. And William, you can come up. Location is 51 Evergreen Circle. Requested a special permit to construct a 35,870 square foot.
You can sit on the table.
I'm good.
Indoor recreational facility with pickleball courts, golf simulators, and a restaurant, pursuant to Sections 172-24C1 and 174-25B18 of the Mashpee zoning bylaw. So I do need that public hearing notice to read into the record. Does anybody have that? You didn't happen to get a copy of Bill, you didn't happen to get a copy of the public? Okay, so I'm gonna recognize the project proponent. Hello.
Hi, good afternoon, good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you.
So, yep, so let's go through the process. So, um, this, this project was sent over to the Cape Cod Commission, I think, months ago. It's been reviewed, there's a decision from the Cape Cod Commission. I think, I think we have something, I think we have the final in our packet. So tonight, it comes back here, we hold a public hearing. So the first thing I'm gonna do is recognize the project proponent, who's going to give us a presentation. Next thing we do is we go around the table, Planning Board members ask the first question. Then we go to Ed Pesci, who is our consulting engineer, and then the town planner. Then we open it up to the public. We probably won't close the public hearing tonight, in case we have some lingering questions. We typically, even when we're done with everything, we leave it open so that we can draft up a decision and discuss the decision with you, just to make sure we didn't get anything wrong or leave anything out.
Sure.
Okay? So with that, I would recognize the project proponent to give us a, a presentation about the application.
Thank you for your time, again, Bill Russell. And I don't know, can you hear me, Karen?
Oh, take the mic with you, 'cause people at home.
Okay. Looking for it here. All right, okay, so, again, good evening. I've got maybe seven or eight pages, but I'll briefly walk through to give an overview of the project as it stands. The, the company representing this is Cape Cod Pickleball and Cape Pickle LLC. We're proposing a location called Island Pickle, which will be a premier indoor pickleball and indoor golf complex with a sports tavern as well. Just a brief introduction of myself, I've been a local resident on Cape Cod since 2008. I'm a cranberry grower, I have a residence in Marsden's Mills. My wife and I, we run a restaurant and catering company out of Ostraville. We've done that for a number of years. That cafe is in transition from an operations standpoint to my daughter, so I can focus more of my attention on this specific project. I come from a background of 30 years of corporate experience, but in the interim, and since I've been here, actively participated in a number of nonprofit functions, Hyannis Rotarian, Ostraville Business Association, I'm a mentor of Cape Cod Young Professionals, and I do a number of advocacy projects within the cranberry-growing community. So that's kind of who I am, briefly. Serendipity got me to today. I actually started looking at existing spaces within the Cape Cod area, targeting the mid-Cape area, where I could modify an existing, an existing building, large box space, to support my desired space. Couple of the issues that I have are column spacing on those facilities or the ceiling heights, and all of those prohibited the adequate use of some of those facilities that I spent quite some time looking at. I did the same thing, looking at existing buildings that I could possibly renovate for use. After some time on doing that, I focused on a build-new facility, which is now what I'm, I've been working through with the Cape Cod Commission since February of 2024, and resulted in me coming here before you today. So it is the perfect location with regards to all the things that I will bring. Just a brief description, and I know many people here are familiar with this location, but it is a location on 51 Evergreen Circle that's surrounded by town-owned continuous open space. Part of that open space, over 26 acres, was allocated to the town for conservation land when the entire sub-development went through the DRI process in 2018 to construct the 10 parcels which are available for industrial development. There are no residential abutters, it's at the end of an existing industrial park that is a new sub-development, accessible from Route 130, less than 15 miles basically from everything upper in mid-Cape, which is my targeted space, which is really an ideal location for what I've developed and what I'm proposing and what I'll be discussing with, with this board on a go-forward basis. From a, from an infrastructure standpoint, briefly, you know, my detailed construction package is complete at this point in time. I have permit-ready drawing set, ready to proceed with, once I get, you know, the approval, obviously, from this, this board, which follows the approval from Cape Cod Commission. That was an exhaustive process. There's 10 indoor courts, they're all indoors, everything you see from a, from a usage standpoint is enclosed. There's room for locker rooms, there's room for a pro shop, there's a sports tavern, and there's golf simulator stations that will be part of that overall structure. It's a large building, it's this, you know, approximately the size of a football field. But what it provides is numerous community and residential benefits. So if you think about the value proposition locally, it's, it has many attributes similar to a town rec or a YMCA facility. You know, I provide recreational play and for a number of age-specific and group capabilities, it's a social and a community event. I have nonprofit partnerships, myself, I'm actually developing a nonprofit to support the utilization of it, and I will be providing discounted residential programs to upper Cape towns, not only the Town of Mashpee, but abutting towns as well. And similarly, the, the growing trend is this becoming a high school varsity sport. It already is in two states in the country. It's already a high school league in Western Mass, which is a sanctioned league, but it's not yet a varsity sport. So I'll be actively working with local town and neighboring town school systems to provide programs to support the development of the youth as well. I mentioned that, you know, I, I will actively utilize this space to support some nonprofit endeavors as well. It also provides a meaningful means for many towns to address abutter noise issues that they have with outdoor courts. Not an outright ban, if you will, but many courts already provide town or noise-ordinate restrictions on when they can be utilized, and that gets a lot of backlash from advocates of the game of the, of pickleball. Well, I do provide an outlet for those, you know, those hours where restrictions may be in play at some of those locations to provide the use on my facility. As I went through the Cape Cod Commission, this was, project was endorsed by many, many people. Three letters from the town manager of Mashpee to the Cape Cod Commission were sent on my behalf, the Select Board sent the letter on my behalf, the Economic Development Committee from the Town of Mashpee sent the letter advocating for this to the Cape Cod Commission, as did the Mashpee Chamber of Commerce. Equally important, during the public comment period for the project, as I went through those, the period of which it was active for discussion, there were over 124 favorable comments that were submitted to the Cape Cod Commission through the public portal and/or letters directly submitted to them, and there were no negative comments that were raised associated with this project. And one of the commissioners actually said at the final hearing that it was the first time, and he's been there a long time, that he ever had a project go through that had overwhelmingly positive endorsement and literally no negative feedback associated with what it could bring. So that's where, that's, that's the value. So that's the value that I bring to the community. You know, I'm excited about being a partner to the town of Mashpee, but also to the community of Upper Cape with what I can provide. Because there is something for everyone. You know, pickleball is a game that's played from ages 8 to 80. I think about the golf simulators, you know, if you're an active golfer, the thing you hate on a Saturday is going behind a very slow foursome that's running in front of you. Well, I offer the ability for teaching your kids how to play golf, you know, in the simulator environment. It provides year-round physical fitness, it can be played 24 days, or 7 days a week, 365 days a year, so you can do it early in the morning or late at night. And it's contemplated in what I offer. What I do offer is a very cool indoor facility that has golf simulator stations. It has a tavern, which will have food and drink, full restaurant. I come from the restaurant industry. And it will have indoor pickleball, which will be noise-abated, so that when you can be in the social areas of the facility, you don't have to listen to the noise that's coming in the pickleball areas. So it will be mitigated within the facility, as well as certainly from the surrounding neighborhood. From a site plan perspective, you know, I went through a site plan review with the town of Mashpee December 3rd, and it was endorsed with the details, many of the same details that were provided to the Planning Board. A design review was also reviewed and approved. In that, both of those are non-regulatory hearings, but they're well represented by members of all boards, including a member from the Planning Board. I have a permit-ready drawing package, the perk tests were completed. The board held variances to support, the requirements specifically around the use of this facility have been approved. Cape Cod Commission DRI process is approved, and that's where we are today. From an overall building standpoint, you know, it's 280 feet long, it's 175 feet in length. It's a steel metal building, I provided the specifications for those. I actually have some samples of what those outdoor facilities look like. But that's generally the structure which is accessible from the front. And then, my last introductory page, obviously, you've talked about it. January 2nd was the final commission approval. Nine hours of hearings, just went through both, you know, not only staff discussions, but subcommittee review, and then full commission review that led me to you all this evening. So that's an introduction of the project. Get this back to the other page.
Oh, yeah. On your USB, do you have the site plan?
I do.
I got the [inaudible].
Right, yeah, I've got the.
So that's the question.
Yeah.
Are this building front and side elevation? What are those barrels? I don't know what they are.
I believe you're just.
They look like barrels.
There are no barrels.
I like [inaudible].
Oh, these here?
Yeah.
Those are doors, those are egress doors to the inside. And these windows have been removed, actually. So there's windows and doors. Actually, the windows have been removed in the final design figure.
Right.
So I have to figure out where to get to the.
And there's one more question.
Yes.
Where the dumpster is.
Yep.
You have another pad beside it, and it says you've got to put chemicals in there.
So, the septic system is an IA system, it's a 10 ppm system. That shed is for the chemicals to support the IA system. It's in close proximity to it, so you need to use it for the, that's its exclusive use.
Right. If that chemical spilt in that shed, is it going to be contained?
Well.
Or does it matter? I don't know what kind of chemical it is, but.
Yeah, I mean, it's really the dousing tank, the dousing details that go into the septic system themselves. So it's the, the only chemicals that are used in there are the chemicals that are actually used to douse into the IA system that's part of it. So, I don't think containment is a requirement for that type of chemical. Its purpose is specifically to go into the ground.
I built a lot of those containment, absurd chemicals that we.
Yeah.
It's a big project that they have to raise, okay.
Yeah. Those are for use to go into the septic system, to go into the soil.
Okay. So this 10 by 10 shed is for your wastewater treatment facility?
Correct.
Okay. And that's right next to the dumpster?
Yeah.
Another thing. Pulling it to the face, yeah. The entrance looks like everybody could use, but to the right of it, at the fire entrance?
So.
It's going to stop people from going into that, though, that's what I don't.
Yeah, so it's a fire egress, so there is a roundabout. So when I met with the fire department in the spring, there was a lot of discussions with the chief and the fire prevention lieutenant around what they wanted for fire access, and vehicle access. And the solution recommended and implemented was all the fire equipment at the front of the building. So the primary fire pump, which I have a fire pump in there, the BDA, the electrical room, the alarm room, that's all in the front of the building that's accessible from a fire truck, which would go in the main entrance and pull right to it. He would only leave through that secondary egress to the right. So its sole purpose, and it will be gated, and it's only for exit purposes.
Lock is going to be gated, Captain Harris, I'm sure.
That's right, yeah. It will not be used for the access for the main facility. It's really there singularly for emergency vehicle egress.
Now, are you going to have?
Oh wait, I'm not done. With that, all right. So it's pavers?
Yeah, yes.
Right? With grat, so it's got those, right, okay.
Yep.
So you're saying that that's for people to get out?
That is for the emergency vehicle, that's for the roundabout for the ladder truck.
I got it.
So the turn radius analysis supported him coming in, in the primary entrance, and then getting to the front of the building for doing their work in an emergency situation. And if required, so he doesn't have to turn around, he can access through that right-hand side.
And that gate is locked with some type of fob that the fire department?
We'll figure out how it will be prevented, so it'll be only used for fire protection egress. And it's only for exit purposes. So that's an open item that I'm sure we can accommodate a solution for. Any vehicle smaller than the ladder truck would be able to fully turn within the facility and go out the primary entrance.
That was a very clever solution. We've had that problem on other sites before. And gee, that's the cleverest solution I've ever seen, so congratulations. All right, go ahead, Dennis.
I forgot the last.
I'm sorry. So we're talking about the fire gate, we did the shed.
I didn't see hydrant, have they given me a hydrant?
No, there's a hydrant right in the center. I have to relocate it. It's actually currently located in the entrance location. It'll be moved to the right.
All right.
And that's something I need to do.
Okay.
I also did the water test pressures, so I know I need a pump. And so my detailed design inside is, and I've shared this with the fire department, they are aware that I need, I will be providing a pump to support fire suppression inside the building. Yeah.
That's what I was asking. I figured you'd have to.
Pressure down there is terrible.
Oh, yeah? All right, that's all my questions.
Okay, who wants to go next?
Well, I can go next.
Thank you, Karen.
Hi, Karen.
Hi, Mr. Russell, how are you?
I'm well, thank you.
This is, I feel that this plan, this project is going to go gangbusters. And as I read through these documents, what I kept coming back to, and you know, you correct me if I'm wrong, you've got 86 bay parking spaces, five accessible, you know, for handicap. So 91 spaces total, right?
Correct, correct, yes.
Okay. All right. The tavern, you have 42 spaces, that means 42 tables or chairs there, 42 people can sit there?
42 parking spaces.
Parking space, excuse me. How many tables, how many seats does the tavern hold?
So, I have that number, it's been provided. I believe the number is, so when I did the math around total occupancy, I included the use of the simulators, the use of the tavern, and the use of the outdoor patio, and combined that number, if I recall, is approximately 100 people. The combined use from those three utilizations. I don't have the exact breakout between the three that I can talk to you here.
Okay, well, 100 people in the tavern spaces, the golf simulators, and the outside patio.
That's correct, yeah.
Okay. So, I don't play pickleball, but in a pickleball court, you have four people, right?
Correct.
Do these people, I mean, I could see some pairs coming together, you know, like two pair, two people on each side, two cars.
Correct.
Or I could see four cars, because they can come there and just show up and, you know, get a match and play a game, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, this is what I'm trying to figure out. You have 42 spaces for the tavern, 27 for the golf simulators. And let's say, I mean, I think it's going to go gangbusters. 10 courts times four, if 40 drivers show up, you've got 42 and 27 and 40, that's 109. You have four office spaces, so you have 113 spaces. Do you have enough parking spaces? That's really what I'm looking at.
Yeah, so, there's a two-part question, I'll answer it two ways. I believe I have enough parking spaces for the requirements of the bylaws. But that's not your real question. Your real question is, do I really have enough parking to prohibit people from parking on the street, which has been an issue on that street? And I understand that, and I've spoken with DPW on that, and we discussed that during the design review and the site plan review back on December 3rd. Since then, I have spoken both solicited and unsolicited with Abutter owners to the property that will offer park, so basically, I can ensure I won't have a street parking issue, because I can take actions if there becomes an issue to remediate the solution. The Abutters that have provided me that feedback of the potential use include Pastore, who is the immediate space to my left, the 3.8 acres immediately to the left of the facility. Givoni, which is about 2 acres immediately to the right. And Triple M, which is on Echo Road. All three of them have offered that, you know, officially. So I could, I have no issue with working with the town to ensure I don't become a parking nuisance if in fact I have insufficient parking spaces because of the use. Now, having said all that, it is compliant with the bylaw requirements for parking. And what we don't know is how simultaneously successful all three elements, or four elements of it will be. Simultaneous use of the pickleball, plus the golf, plus the tavern, plus the outside spaces. So, I can assure you, I mean, I'm the guy running it, I'm the guy operating it, I'm the guy building it, and I'm going to solve this problem before it becomes a problem. And I can do that with the local Abutters, they've already provided me a means to be able to support that. And that does not create a pedestrian issue, because those lots that I speak of are directly adjacent to the lot that I'm building.
So Karen, can I just interject here?
Sure.
So, you're looking at shared parking?
Not to meet a requirement, to meet an issue that sometimes exists on the street today.
Okay, let me get, let me get to the end of my sentence.
Fair enough, sorry.
Okay, so, this is shared parking, right? So, for me to accept that as an answer to Karen's comment, I would like to see something in writing, an agreement in principle, right, with your neighbors. They need to think about, you know, they want to help you out.
Right.
Nobody hates parking more than me, okay? But just something in writing like, you know, some people will let you use their parking when they're closed.
Right.
Right? And then, if you see gaps, like if you start to have tournaments or something like that, what's your proposal to make sure everybody has a safe place to park? Nobody's parking on the street, heaven forbid on 130.
Right.
Heaven forbid on open space, right? Okay, so is that, I mean, we're not going to close the hearing today, is that something you can work on?
Absolutely. And they've already said they're willing to provide that, so I have no issue with getting that.
Right, and it doesn't have to be, you know, something recorded at the registry, or just a memorandum of agreement, or an agreement in principle?
Yep.
That's my, that's something for us to think about.
Sure.
It wouldn't hurt to know how many vehicles would be impacted, might as well have it.
Well, I think Karen brings up a really good point, if you just count how many courts there are. You know, if you just start to count, if you count, how many people could be in this building being active? And if they each brought a car, heaven forbid. But.
Part of that issue may be coming from the fact that our bylaw, when you calculate square footage, it's typically for tennis courts and racquetball courts. And pickleball courts tend to be smaller, so he's fitting in 10 courts, and then it's less square footage for the actual parking. So it worked out to 18 spaces for the 10 courts.
And is that in our zoning bylaw, or in our regulations?
That's in the zoning bylaw.
Okay, and, okay. All right. Go on, continue on, Karen, thank you.
Okay, I was just thinking, I'm just throwing this out, Mr. Russell. You know, if you had tournaments, you know, if this thing really got hot and you got people like crawling all over the place, I guess you could have, you could hire a boss that could all meet at a certain place. And, you know, Mashpee Commons or something, you could take them over there.
Yeah.
And let them return, let them park somewhere.
My commitment is to solve any problems before they become problems. And so, all of those things are possible. I can't commit to a specific thing, because we don't know what it is, other than we'll solve the problem and not become an obstacle. Because I do know that there are problems on that street, on parking on that street today. And I don't want to be part of that, a bigger problem that exists on that street. Because I will have, I will have cars that are coming, and I know that. But I also know with confidence I can solve that problem.
Okay, so I think what Mary's saying is a memorandum of understanding would be really good to have.
Sure.
The other things, since I'm a tree person, is, and maybe Ed is going to talk about this, because I see what he's thought here, but I don't know if it's been resolved. Update the planning schedule for the bio-retention areas. You know, whatever the stormwater manual says, you want to make sure you have enough plants, native species, that work in a bio-retention area. And I think we would like a landscape plan.
So, I believe I did provide a landscape.
There is a landscape plan on the bottom.
There is a landscape plan.
Do you know what page it is?
It's, uh.
Oh, you don't know, is my art?
It's separate from the engineering plans, it would have been a separate attachment.
But let me talk about, let me talk about it as you search for it, and I apologize that I don't have the number.
So, wait, Brian knows what the landscape plan is, where is it?
So, in the smaller version of the plans, it's labeled landscape plan in the bottom right-hand corner, L0.0.
Oh, I see, I see it here. Is that sufficient? Well, Ed will talk about that. Is that going to work, is that going to prevent, you know, flooding?
So, Madam Chair, I can try to answer that question real quick.
Go right ahead.
Again, for the record, I'm Ed Pesci from Pesci Engineering Consultants and Planning Board. I did take a look at landscape plan L0.0. It does look like it's got some reasonable plantings in there. You know, it's a spotty, it's not a very dense planting schedule inside the two, three, I should say, three bio-retention areas. But, you know, we don't want a lot, we do want some plantings there, it's mostly shrubs. And it's all, excuse me, proposed in there. But I think the board ought to just take a look at the perimeter planting and see if they're comfortable. I was relatively comfortable with the look of it and an understanding of it. I don't see any problems, I'll just say this, there's no issues whatsoever with compatibility with the stormwater management system, none whatsoever.
Hey, Ed, it's Mary.
Yes?
Hi, Ed, so is the bottom of the swales going to be vegetated?
Yes. I'm looking, I'm trying to find a detail sheet to show you that, but.
Okay, good.
If I may just add a comment relative to one of the actions from the Cape Cod Commission that's relative to the landscape plan. So, there was some conversations, and confusion candidly, in that 100% of the plants that are on the legend and detailed on this plan that you're looking at came from Association to Preserve Cape Cod's Native Species Planting List. And Clipper Landscaping, who is a Mashpee company, did this landscape plan for me. One of the commissioners objected to some of the specific plants. And so, what I said was, if I, once I get clarity around what the specific issued plants are, and whether they're not native species, even though they are on the Association to Preserve Cape Cod's Native Species list, I'll solve that problem. So I reserve the right to modify this, only to address this unknown question around. around native species plantings. But I am, as a cranberry grower, I'm passionate about pollinator-friendly stuff. I understand the necessity of bees, and native bees and native pollination I'm very akin with, based upon the interactions I've had with APCC. And so this plan will have some revisions, but it will not deter from its primary intent. And nor will it restrict the benefits of the, you know, bio-retention fields that are proposed. Does that make sense, Mary, Ms. Chairman?
That, I think that makes sense to me. I, I see from, Karen, I hope you can hear me. I see from the Cape Cod Commission decision, they are asking for an updated plan. You'll see that as a condition for ours, that it's, it's submitted to us for our review as well. I know that either Ed or Brian, our town planner, are going to talk about the in-lot trees, making sure that that requirement is, is met. I know that parking lots are, I know that you have solar in your future. I know that sometimes parking lots are used.
Will not be.
For carports.
They will not be.
Or the top of the building. And maybe someday the carports will look better and be more attractive. But what, I'm, I'm just kinda planting the seed, the acorn. We do have a tree program here in town, and if we find that there's a deficiency in the number of trees, we might wanna talk to DPW about their need for trees. Do you know what I'm saying? Your parking lot is, is tight. I don't wanna make it tighter. But there is a, a tree fund that we have, and it's not, we can't require mitigation, but you can offer it.
I get it.
You know what I mean? It's just something to think about. Okay, Karen, go ahead. What else?
Okay, I was just, let's see. The, it's saying in here that the project would add forty-three point ninety-one kilograms of nitrogen per year. And that is to Pompaneset and to Wacoit Bay both, correct?
Correct.
And I guess I don't need to know how they came up with the calculation that you have to pay three hundred and sixty-three thousand and change. Forty-three point ninety-one kilograms a year times eight thousand two ninety. I guess that's too technical to ask. I'm sure, if you know the answer, you can tell me.
I do.
I just wonder how they arrived at that.
But it, that was six hours of argument, but I lost. But, but what I can tell you is, two thousand and eighteen, Cape Cod Commission Water Resource Technical Bulletin details out the cost per year for twenty years of remediating nitrogen. And they, and that number comes to eighty-two ninety. That's the basis when it was done in two thousand and fourteen.
Per kilogram.
Per kilogram, right. And so then it's simple math of, they say, well, you know, you, you calculate your nitrogen load from a series of things. The, the septic system itself, your stormwater management system from the parking, as well as your roof load, and those add up to that forty-three and change that you speak of. Now, that number is based upon my ten PPM system. So I, I have a very, I have the most advanced IA system for this site's facility that you can put in. It's ten PPM. You, you have to get over ten thousand gallons per day to get to less than that. But in this, in this space of two thousand to ten thousand gallons per day, it is the most advanced IA system that you can implement. And on that basis, the math comes out to that three ninety-six or three sixty-four thousand dollars. My disputes with them, I'll table, because they won.
So, so in the, and I know, Karen, you read this. So in the Cape Cod Commission, it talks about the system being able to get down to nineteen. And then it continues on saying that you plan to run it in such an operating, an operational way that you're gonna, your target is ten milligrams per liter. Why, why do I think, when we use special permits, we always put a number in there?
We have five. We try to get five, but the state's number's ten.
Okay.
So long as they meet the ten, even though we put five, they're okay with it.
We're not looking at a plant, we're looking at an IA.
Oh, that's why. Thank you. Sorry.
So there is a walk, it's part of the, the, the design of the solution and the redesign of the septic system. They got to me where we are today. That walked me from a conventional septic system, let's say twenty-five, to, there's other IA systems that can get to nineteen. And then it comes down to, how is it state-approved? And so BioBarrier is state-approved to be less than that on a pilot program basis, which I am approved to support. And they're, so they're designing the solution to ten PPM, they're committing to ten PPM. And then I have an O and M plan that they will monthly monitor and make changes to, to ensure that it is ten PPM.
Okay.
And on ten PPM, that supports the rest of those calculations for nitrogen effluent. And, and the other answer to your question, Karen, is the lot, the lot splits those two bays. So the, the line, the estuary map between Pompaneset and Wacoit is in the middle of this building. So that's why, you know, it's assumed that the, the effluent will go to both estuaries.
Yeah, makes sense.
Karen, can I just say one more thing?
Yeah, I think I'm pretty much done. Go ahead, Karen.
So the other thing we do is we, we've required monthly reports?
Yeah, and I will be providing those. It's part of my O and M plan. So the people, BioBarrier does the O and M plan, and they're obligated to report it to the town, to the commission, and to the state on a monthly basis.
So it'd be very interesting to us if we were CC'd? On, on, the planning board was CC'd on that number, that monthly number?
You, no, you'll have a direct copy.
Okay, so you'll see that as a proposed condition?
Yep.
Okay, great. Go ahead, Karen, we didn't hear you.
One last question. Who is the manufacturer? Because I was over in Martha Mill, I think it was. I can't remember the name of it, but what, who is the manufacturer of that IA system?
Biomicrobics. Biomicrobics. Thank you, sorry. Biomicrobics, and the system is BioBarrier. So those are the, that's the specific system.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, who wants to be next?
I'll take a shot at it.
Okay, Robert.
Okay. Just back to the landscape plan and, and the shrubs and trees that, I noticed that there's inkberry as one of the selected. I could see, you know, you know, customer-related issues with inkberry droppings on all these cars. Because where I live, we have lots of inkberries, and cars are the victim of droppings. So if, if, if there's a selection of ones, you might wanna consider your customers.
Thank you.
The other thing was, you're gonna have a, I believe, a very successful operation there. So successful, perhaps, there might be a noise issue for abutters. I know you're at the end of a long cul-de-sac and no residential in the area. Do you have any words to, and I noticed that you have outside seating areas, and I could see tournaments coming in with a large overflow of interested people or participants. What can you say about noise abatement for the closest house that might be a quarter, half a mile away or more?
Yeah, so, so, good question. What I'd say is this, is that the only outdoor capability is a, is a three-sided patio that will exist on the left-hand side of that, that faces joint arms base. That's the only abutter that, there are no, you know, on that road, if you get to, was it Akushnet? Akushnet has...
Schumett.
A Schumett, thank you. A Schumett does have some residences, but they are quite a distance. Well, you're quite a distance to the other way, but quite a distance from that, right? And, and so I, I would say there are no plans for any significant outdoor noise creation. And all the noise creation is really contained within this large building, which is...
I was thinking more like amplified music.
Yeah, well, I don't have, I mean, there, there will be speakers out there, right? But it won't be amplified, right? I mean, there'll be some capability out there.
I think, I think you have to get that, you have to get a license from the SLUC board.
For entertainment.
For amplified music.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I, I will pursue those things, and those will become things that I will navigate through a solution for. But having said that, I don't anticipate, you know, this becoming an issue. You know, and conversely, there's a lot larger, a lot more active outdoor facilities, much, much closer to residential abutters that are kind of this prevalent. And I don't have any of those.
So I, I do have to say I live right there, sound-wise, yes. I, I hear cars in, in very early morning, in the summer, with the windows open. I can hear cars going up and down Route 130. I can hear when people in the commercial and industrial parks, they put their backup sound. I, I know there's somebody else in the audience that kinda lives in the same area. It is so, it's not so much that they're noisy, it is so quiet there. So, right, let's, let's think about amplified music. What happens is, when you start to have it early, early morning, or late, late at night, when everything else is quiet, you, there's no, like, background noise to kinda, you, you can start to hear it. So thank you for bringing that up. I noticed that your operation hours are seven AM to ten. There are noise requirements.
There's a noise by law in town.
By law, that, so it's seven o'clock, so you, you just wanna be cautious of, of that as well.
Yeah, and so the intent on the seven is really, I mean, the whole place isn't gonna blow up at seven AM. It's really, you know, to get those people who wanna play pickleball before they go to work. And now they have an outlet to do so, right? So it's, but I understand your point, and your point is well-taken.
Right, so there used to be a gym on 130. I don't know if you know, women's workout. I think they opened up at five. They were, I, I was there sometimes at five. But they, it was always just like the clerk to open it up and check people in. They weren't doing outside stuff. So, anything else?
Like for birthday parties for kids?
Probably, probably. Or corporations, you know, or associations, you know. But at the end of the day, doing one thing prohibits you from doing something else, right? So those, those are all trade-offs that will be worked out with time, right? But I, I'll say, yes, I will be.
Well, I had two boys, my grandson and their friend.
They can come. They didn't want me to book that for?
Has to be under fifty-dollar charge.
I said, I see if I can do something about it. No, that'd be nice to take.
Yeah. I mean, this is, candidly, the recreational element and the community element, it is a big part of what I'm intending to do, right? I mean, my daughter, when she took over our cafe, just to give you some context of that, you know, she was a special needs educator. She's hiring learning disabled people to work at her, at the cafe now, which is why it's renamed Rise and Shine. So I'm very attuned to trying to do some of these things, so. And, and I'm the guy running it, you know, I'll be there all the time, so.
And thank you for letting us know it's gonna be a tavern up front. Some people are a little shy to let us know. It's important for us to know.
Sure.
Rob, do you have anything else?
Nope.
Okay.
All right, I don't really have any questions. I think a lot of, all of my questions are addressed in the, in the proposal, so. It's very well put together. I think this project will be a great addition to the town, so I appreciate that. I also appreciate the inclusion of an IA wastewater treatment system. I mean, that's forward-thinking. And as far as the, the water quality, I think, I think everything's addressed. You had to be consistent with the Cape Cod Commission's regional policy plan. The, all the water resource objectives are planning to be met. The only one you couldn't meet was because the sewers aren't gonna be implemented until 2037, and there's a mitigation plan for the, even for, even for that. Community design looks good to me. The, you have, you have the native plants in the plan. I like that you're planning to reduce the need for nitrogen-based fertilizer. Well done.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, so a lot of things that I had written down have been mentioned. I think we're gonna do a little, I, I, we haven't gotten to our consulting, our, our board engineer. So I have that question about in-lot trees and the landscaping. The hours of operation that probably will be noted in the special permit. It doesn't seem like there's people in the area, but there actually are. There are a lot of people that walk Route 130. I live on a Schumett. I, I do a lot of walking there in the spring. And it's like pickleball season opens up. And a lot of people race down my road. Now, my road is very flat, it's straight. It feels like nobody's there, but there's actually a lot of people that live on the street. So you said something in your, in the Cape Cod Commission work that you were going to encourage people to carpool, so...
Me and my obligations...
Oh, the employees.
I have no control of anyone. I can influence them, but I can't control them.
Exactly.
But I can control my employees.
Okay, exactly. So just to let you know that once in a while, I, I drop an email to the Pickleball Association that uses the pickleball courts on a Schumett Road and the Department of Recreation, just to, you remind people, hey, don't speed. There's something about, like, a, a time that you have a reservation for. People tend to really go faster than normal, so you might see a suggestion like that from me.
Sure.
You might see a suggestion about construction hours from Dennis. Dennis usually has a standard condition that we put in. I like that you have EV chargers. I like that you're thinking about going solar at some point. We're gonna get to the parking with the town planner and the, and the board engineer. I, I thought I read something about the size, I haven't been able to find it again, the size of your parking spots.
It was in the engineer's report.
It was in...
It's the length of the parking spot in the engineer's report.
And my civil team replied, I don't know if Ed's had the chance to review it yet, but, but the question that was raised was, they clarify why they are sized as they are. And the answer provided is they are in line with the provisions of the bylaws for a twenty-four-foot-wide egress or, or driveway. So basically, the, the fact that it's a larger width of, of drive, the spa, and it's, we're talking about, what was it, Ed? Point three feet or something like that? Instead of twenty feet, they're like...
Point six, seven.
What's that?
Point six, seven.
It's just basically...
Eight inches.
A few, yeah, eight, eight inches, couple inches, so. Instead of a nine by twenty, it's nine by nineteen point three three.
That was a typo. It's not nine point three three.
It was a typo, because it said nine point nine.
He's not cutting the parking spaces in half. Ed very shrewdly picked up on the point, but it was just missed a one. It was missing a one.
I'm not crazy.
It was a legitimate question, but a typo too, that made it look like a huge problem. But it is conforming...
You should say nineteen, I understand.
It is conforming to the table of the bylaw seven, one seventy-four, whatever.
So it's, he's, he's at nineteen point three three feet length, whereas the bylaw does technically require twenty for the length of the parking spaces. But then they also, the bylaw also, what he's saying is he is compliant with the measurement of the back-to-back parking spaces, like the overall length, as well as the aisle in between the two parking spaces.
Because I had a note here, compact car, right, okay. All right, okay, all right.
Everybody's in Mini Coopers.
All right.
Can you give Mary one spot? That's extra wide.
Mary parks here. And the other thing is, if we go through this and there's a, any waiver, we need to have that specifically called out, so that we vote on it separately before we vote on the decision. Okay, and with that, I, Brian or Ed, who wants to go first?
It's up to you, Ed.
I'm happy to go.
Okay, go ahead, Ed.
Yeah, so I, so hello, Bill.
Hi.
Nice to meet you. And you have done a thorough, I think, presentation tonight. And it's pretty obvious from your ability to speak and answer questions that you've been through a lot on this project, and that you certainly have a very good handle on both the overview and also the technical background on things. and also the technical background on things. Again, for the record, I'm Ed Pashi, Pashi Engineering. We did take a look at the plans and documents that were submitted. The traffic impact study was reviewed, I'll just make the point that was reviewed by our traffic consultant, Chappell Engineering. They reviewed all the different components of the traffic study. And the Cape Cod Commission decision that listed a number of traffic improvements, which I think the town should certainly accept and approve as well. But there were no, in a nutshell, there were no issues at all with the analysis that was performed or the safety improvements that were proposed, and the other mitigation that the Island Pickle project is going to provide. So that's putting it aside. I did provide a letter, albeit it was at the end of business or turn business yesterday. So not a lot of time, so I appreciate your team, Bill, trying to prepare responses today and getting us something. So I did have a chance to go through all of that. Let me just quickly review, I did take a look at the VHB responses. I've got a couple of follow-ups with that, very minor, and I'll go through those in a second. I did take a look at the McGarrett Gannon Stormwater documentation, the investigation documentation. That has adequately addressed any concern I have over requiring test pits down the road. Obviously, didn't have that information, didn't realize that was the case. Did receive the lighting cut sheets, and response from VHB said that you'd be providing a point-to-point photometric plan later on. That's fine. I also did see the response regarding the fire department review, and wasn't aware, didn't have any documentation about the site plan review work that you had done. But I did get, obviously, all you could put together in a quick amount of time was the template showing the Mashpee Tower truck. And all I'm asking is for, and I did in a quick email today, no need to obviously have, it's kind of difficult, of course, to respond immediately. But I was asking for a copy of an auto turn template or an auto turn plan showing how that truck does traverse through the site safely, and doesn't clip the end of parking lots or parking spaces where people could be occupied. So I would like to have that, what's called swept path analysis. It's typically done with a piece of software that mounts on AutoCAD called Auto Turn. But I know that VHB understands this, because that's one of the things I'd like to request that they do. I did see the discussion about chemicals, the chemical storage shed. And I would like you to obviously provide a list of those chemicals. Again, you made the point that they're putting, they're feeding, it's undoubtedly probably a carbon source for the denitrification step, but they're feeding into the treatment system, and it is going into the ground, so it's not a terrible chemical per se. But I think it would be cool of us to have a list of those chemicals that will be stored there.
That's me.
You know, whether, and you made the point that they would need to have a containment, to be stored on a containment pad or a containment, portable containment pallet, if you will, with a false bottom. I don't know, I don't know what that is. You know, we'll just, I did try to look online in BioMyProX website, and I couldn't find anything. So I found lots of information on your bio-barrier system, and uses air, certainly. But that's all I could find. I think in that shed, you'll also be placing, more than likely be placing a blower motor, but I don't know what the type of chemicals might be. So chemicals, that's swept path analysis. You did mention in your email that you were bringing the sign and dated O&M plan. O&M plan was adequate, but I wanted to make sure that we have a signature from the applicant. That's one of the policies I like to make sure we do, so that we know that the applicant was aware that they're required to do all the work that's required to maintain their system and pay for that, pay for that maintenance. So I don't know, Bill, if you brought that with you or you were able to tonight.
What was that, Ed?
I'll answer all those questions.
What was the name of that plan?
Oh, no.
Stormwater Operation Maintenance Plan was part of the stormwater analysis. One of the VHB responses to my comments regarding specifying the gravel-based material sieve, the response was that that's going to be designated in a, and provided to the contractor as part of the earthwork specification in the construction package. So I would just like to get that earthwork specification also provided to the board to take a look at that and have it as part of the record. So like to have that. Obviously, there were a couple of minor, I mean, I have to say, very minor, plans were well-prepared, very minor edits in various things. Those revised, final revised plans should be provided. And then there was some discussion in the stormwater comments that there's going to be a revised, a stormwater addendum to address a couple of my comments there. So I just would like to get a copy of that, obviously, and we understand, and that is certainly on its way and being prepared now. One of the final items that I wanted to mention that actually, our town planner here, Brian Tobin, actually mentioned to me, and Brian, I just want to bring it up in front of the board and the applicant, and that is that the application, the special permit application called for 37,000 square foot indoor recreational facility, but didn't specifically mention, and I don't know if it needed to, and I think Brian was concerned to protect the applicant to make sure, one way or the other, from a legal point of view, whether you needed to actually have a separate special permit for the restaurant and tavern use, or if that needs to be amended to this application and included, so that it's part of the whole overall decision. We understand that the entire application involves all of this, that all your plans involve that. You know, you made the point that you have, you basically have a 76-seat restaurant and a 24-seat tavern, so 100 seats. So it's all, I mean, it's pretty clear in your plans that you're doing that, so it's no secret. I just want to make sure that from a procedural point of view, that that's not missed, and then it creates a problem down the road.
Do you mind, let me just address that last point, because it's kind of moot. Ed, thank you for bringing that up, and yeah, also for the record, Madam Chair, Brian Tobin, Town Planner.
Bring your mic in real close.
How's that, is that better, still now?
I guess so.
All right. Regarding the restaurant, we looked at it, and it looked like there were somewhat competing provisions of the bylaw between the overlay district and I-1, which is the underlying zoning. In the end, I think it was kind of a joint decision that I-1, which does, which would allow a restaurant in the scenario, a full-service restaurant in the scenario, and does not require a special permit to do so, as of right, would win the day. So we don't, we think procedurally, he's okay where he's at right now.
Okay. So may I answer some of the questions, just for confirmation?
Yes.
So thank you, Ed, and I did, as you pointed out, say that I'll provide the stormwater addendum, the photogenics analysis for the lighting, those are in process. They will certainly be done within the next, you know, seven calendar days. The earthwork specification, I actually was hoping to bring it with me today. All other copies, hard copies, so I left Brian with eight hard copies of everything that I emailed to everyone as well. That was the details, the follow-up requests or answers from VHB, as well as the cut sheets. The addendum for the stormwater management will be provided. But the analysis that went into it, when we made the change to the actual drawings, was based upon the details. So there's going to be no change required on the actual engineering design of the system going from that area, which was, you know, impervious or pervious to impervious. So the system is supporting of it. It's merely a documentation of it to make an addendum to the stormwater report, which will also come. The earthwork specification, the list of chemicals is new. I will add that to my list of things to provide. And the swept turn analysis, we will provide that as well. So there's no concern on providing any of these things.
Yep, and he talked about some type of retention container.
Oh, that was when we was talking about the chemicals. If they require some sort of containment, I need to provide you what that's going to be. Because he can't comment of whether they need them or not, because he doesn't know what they are.
He doesn't know the list of containers.
So I'll provide the details accordingly to say, these are what they are. And if the requirement is they need to be contained, I'll provide you a source, a detail of how they'll be contained.
So, Ed, while I have you, you know, engaged on Zoom, I just wanted to ask a couple of things. So you looked at the stormwater analysis, right, right, Ed?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So I noticed that it has porous pavement in there.
Not anymore. That's the point, that's the point he's making. It was including porous pavement in a lot of the area. There's only one location that's porous pavement, and that is the grass paved area on the right side, on the east side, the emergency access for the fire department.
Okay.
And just, you know, kind of full disclosure, the stormwater report was made to an earlier revision. And so when we made the change to the drawing package, we did the analysis, but didn't go back and update the stormwater plan. So what Ed has asked for is, can you provide me with the update to the stormwater plan? And we're going to do that by way of an addendum to it that covers the information requested.
Okay. I'm listening, I'm listening to all the nitrogen people when I hear porous pavement, my ears perk up, okay. But the grass pavers, I'm fine with, okay. Now, there's some traffic improvements that the Cape Cod Commission is requiring. Can you briefly go over those for me?
Sure. So there's both congestion mitigation and safety mitigation. And the, there is actually, the ability to resequence the timing of traffic lights addresses both safety and congestion. So it satisfies mitigation for both those areas for three specific intersections. So they did an analysis on, I believe it was six intersections, plus two facilities, plus a 24-hour surveillance of this road, as well as some details on Echo Road as well, to get the flow going to Triple M, as well as the flow exists on this road, as well as the main artery, which is 130. Champions in Plymouth, which is an indoor pickleball, or indoor golf facility, they did counts there, as well as at Pickles in Hanover, because the Institute of Traffic Engineering Handbook doesn't include those two sports as part of their template. So the basis for those and adding them into the overall plan was how those were accommodated, and that was agreed to by the commission. Any intersection that has so many, or greater than so many events in, over the last three years, requires some form of mitigation. The mitigation that's proposed is the timing of three lights, as well as some signage, as well as some limb cluttering on one of the specific intersections. Having said that, there was another intersection, which is, which was in Sandwich, which has already been remediated by the town of Sandwich. It's the big one down by the Stop and Shop. So that one was in the list of things that needed to be changed, but there was work underway by the town of Sandwich, so I didn't need to do that one. Additionally, the intersection here was proposed that I needed to make changes to it, but there's some ongoing discussions in the town that that may become a roundabout. So the DPW has at their discretion to tell me, as we go through the permitting process, are they going to do that roundabout in a sufficient time that I do not need to sequence the light here? Or because of the roundabout, or if that's going to be delayed, then I will need to provide the timing change on the lights that exist here. That one and two other lights are, they're all on Route 130, and the names escaped me, but they're in the report.
Okay.
What I'm doing.
So they're in VHB's traffic, who did the?
Yes, so VHB did the traffic report, and they're in VHB's report, they're also in the commission findings.
They're in the findings.
The easiest to find in the findings, because it's a 17-page document.
Go to page nine of the DRI decision, there's a good description of everything there. It starts there, should say.
Okay. So my call on the intersection of Route 130 and Great Neck Road North is that there's some preliminary work being done as a rotary. It's not on, and I hope I'm not misspeaking, and we have to check with DPW. That intersection is not on the tip, it's, because it doesn't have a high enough crash number. When your intersection is on that state list, right, you eventually get to the top, and you have to come up with, I think, at least 25%, and the state kicks in. The last public hearing I heard about that rotary was that it's never going to get, it's never going to get to the top, so the town would have to pay for the whole thing. And what's in front of it, basically on the state list, is the rehabilitation of the Mashpee Rotary. Right, care, right? And that would have a huge benefit for lots of people. So my call is that that intersection of Route 28 and Great Neck Road North is improved. Because if I can't get a timeline for when the town is going to do it with town money, then it's not going to get done. We can figure that out as some type of agreement in principle. You know what I mean? Right now, town meeting, there's a significant number of overrides. You know what I mean? Like, that little mini roundabout is not going to get on the list for a long time.
That's right.
And that's basically the way the commission left it. They kicked it to the town to decide.
Okay.
So they didn't, they didn't say who in the town would decide, but they basically said, we understand the town is considering a roundabout. If they're going to do it, we're not going to require you to do an unnecessary resequencing of timing that's only going to be removed by a roundabout.
I propose that the planning board take this on and make this decision. We can do it with, we can do it with input from other departments. But if we don't take this opportunity to get this intersection improved.
Were you talking about the roundabout here?
Not as a roundabout, it's just a singling, a signaling, right? There's some suggestions for improvement. Did you price out how much that would be?
Not yet, no.
Was that something that you can, that's an important piece of information for us.
Sure.
To know.
Sure.
I don't, I don't, you know why. I don't want to make your project financially unfeasible.
Right.
But I want to get our.
I understand.
What we deserve. I mean, you lucked out on that sandwich intersection.
I know. That was a big one.
Big time.
Well, they did more than what I would have had to do, but it's a much better intersection.
Oh.
I agree.
I was tortured by that intersection for 20 years.
That's on my now, my to-do list, is how I'm going to get through the necessary obligations that I've committed to for the commission, and what I'm going to need to commit to for you, right? Those are things that are going to have to get done. I understand that.
Okay. Okay, the other thing is, you, there were two recent, relatively recent special permits issued by this board with those photogenic plans, and then photometric, sorry.
You're photogenic.
I knew there was a connection.
Barry's the most photogenic.
Thank you.
I think I said it wrong. I said it wrong.
So charming, okay. So, okay, so then what happens is they get the building permit, they get all the signs off, da-da-da-da-da-da, and then they go in and they install lights on, you know, just lights everywhere, which blows the photometric plan. So it's something we have to discuss on how to control that, because it's too late for us to do that, and it would mean an enforcement letter from the building commissioner after these startup companies have just spent a significant amount of money, outdoor patio lights. So if there's any type of patio light that you're thinking of, do you know what I mean? Ask us now.
Well, the patio will have lights, right? But the question is, the question that I'm taking away, or the thing I need to do, is include that lighting in the photometric.
Ask us now.
My intent is not to have a lot of lights. I don't need them. One, I'm in the end of an industrial park, right? I mean, let's, I'll put that in context too, right? I have no abutters, other than industrial abutters. Having said that, I respect what you're saying. And so when I need to provide an external lighting summary, it should include and comprehend the light that's going to be on the front sign, as well as the lights that are going to be in the patio, as well as the lights on the entrance. And I need to make sure my lighting engineers do that work.
So there's some local businesses, they have lights that they weren't permitted to have, you know, you know what I'm talking about?
I do know what you're talking about, yeah.
And I don't want you to think just because there's two businesses right on 130 that have them.
Right.
They haven't come back to us for anything. I will be bringing it up, once they, if they come for a special permit modification. But they tend to leave them on all night. And that. But they tend to leave them on all night, and that messes up nature. It messes up our pollinators. It has a huge impact on our pollinators. So, for example, um, you know, if you, if you have outdoor patio, you're, yeah, you're a business. You're going to want them out, you're going to want those lights on Saturday night till closing hours. But maybe you don't have to have them out every night.
I understand.
Do you know what I'm saying?
Yes.
Okay. And I had a question about your floor plans, and, you know. Okay. Your, your building is a square and a rectangle, right?
Yes.
So, so we have floor plans that are like a square. Is, is that rectangle piece the outdoor patio?
It's both. So, may I walk over there and just?
Yes. I'm so confused about the floor plans. Okay, so here's, okay, here's, okay.
Let me go to an easier way to look at it. I'm going to, I'm going to go between C401 and A1-2. Okay, so this is, excuse me, not A1-2, I apologize. And A1 dot 1.
Okay.
So this is the rectangle. So what it is is, there's, there's.
Oh, okay.
There's four pickleball courts that are in the building, and then this is the external patio, right? So that patio, which is shown by that line right there, so this is the external patio right here, right? So the concrete, so this is the concrete that's for that patio area, and there's an, there's, this is the enclosure to it. So when you look at it from a building, you can see it here, that's the patio, and it's covered.
Oh.
Right here, yeah.
Okay.
And it's covered, as it's covered is, when you look at the front of the building, these elevations, that's it.
Okay.
Right? So basically, it's, it's a big building and a small building and an overhang, which is the patio. This is, this is, this is the patio overhang.
Okay.
Which is just in the front. But the big steel building goes all the way, so it's like, you know, this is one roof line that's 25 feet on one side and 34 feet on the other side in height, and, and these are four pickleball courts, you know, here, and then there's the patio in front. So I'm just pointing at this. Does it make sense?
No, it doesn't.
And, and that patio will have some form of a rope line, or fence line, or bush line to make it inaccessible, but from a fire standpoint, ingressable, if that makes, if that's a word. And I just don't have that detailed design yet, but it will be designed.
So how many pickleball courts do you have?
10 total.
10?
Yeah.
Okay.
So there's a six-pack and a four-pack.
Okay.
The six-pack are within, that, will have visual, you'll visually be able to see them from within the tavern through a sound-mitigated wall that will be glassed. And then those four courts will be somewhat separate from everything.
Okay.
You know, that, that they'll, you'll access them by way of the patio.
So on A1-0, the bottom key, it's like the square part is shaded in, so that's the floor plane.
That's right.
Okay. And then the next page.
Yep, that's exactly right.
The rectangular piece is shaded in, so that's the floor plane for that.
It's just too long to put it on one sheet to have it make sense.
Okay. Ed, do you, do you have anything else for us?
No, I just wanted to make sure I was, I understand, and, and give you an opportunity to ask a question about street trees or in-lot trees.
Okay.
I was looking, looking for that reference in zoning by law, and I couldn't, couldn't track it down.
He's asking you guys where, where you would find the details on street, or the in-lot trees.
Is, do we have in-lot, do we have an in-lot tree regulation or bylaw or anything?
Candidly, off the top of my head, I couldn't answer that question.
Okay, so we're, sorry, we're going to have to get back to you.
I do know about the tree preservation by law, but that's on the other side of things, from a tree-cutting perspective.
Does that apply to this?
By law, I don't know what you mean by that.
Unless he's cutting trees, no.
It's in, obviously, you require shade trees in the subdivision role, and that's it.
Okay, I'll, I'll have to, all right. So Ed, if, if you're good, I'm going to go to Brian, our town planner.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, Brian, go ahead.
Sure. A little bit of an echo there, but, uh, yeah. So, yeah, for the, for the record, Madam Chair Town Planner, Brian Telvin, I guess just like broad-brush stepping back, I would kind of echo the sentiments of a number of the board members, as well as the town engineer, that this.
Try the other mic. I think that mic is a dud.
Maybe it's just my low voice, I don't know. Is this helpful?
That's much better. No, that other mic is a dud.
Yeah, all right. Swap these out. Okay. So as I was saying, I'll just pick up where I left off. As I was saying, I would echo the sentiments of a number of the board members, as well as our engineer, which is that this is obviously a very well-thought-out project, and very well put together, and it's been vetted already by the Cape Cod Commission. I think it would, it is something that would be good for the town as well, just to have a rec facility of this nature, and it would certainly have an economic benefit, both directly to the town, as well as to adjacent businesses. We did a review of both the dimensional requirements and the use requirements, and it was fully compliant with our zoning code in both areas. The main point of discussion has already been, that I wanted to raise, has already been brought up by the board, and we've covered a number of the issues just kind of surrounding the parking lot and the parking situation. Again, the length of those lots, as Ed brought up in his engineering, uh, excuse me, the length of the spaces, as Ed brought up in his engineering report, is slightly less than as required by code, which I guess would raise kind of a larger issue of additional kind of to-do items. It would be nice if your engineers would get a list to the board of any variances that they're seeking from zoning code compliances, if they could just compile a complete list that are on the plans, that would be ideal.
But just to clarify, I don't see this as requiring a variance. I see this as compliant. We discussed it as, as such, because the distance of the traversable path is 24 feet, so the space isn't in, the interpretation, and this is, the interpretation of my civil engineering team is, it is compliant. So I'm not seeking a variance on the spacing or the size of the parking spaces. So if there is a question that we need to follow up on, we can, and I will do so, but I'm confused because they're telling me that it meets 174-38.
Well, then, then, yeah, sorry, if you want to take it out.
Go ahead, Ed.
Yeah, just let me just state, I mean, I, first time I really paid close attention to that, Bill. So just let me just read from the section, this is page, this is the section 174-38 that Bill's mentioning, he said. It says, except as part of a parking module sized as indicated below, each recorded parking space shall not be less than 20 feet in length, exclusive of aisles derived from maneuver space. Okay? Up above, it talks about nine feet in width. Otherwise, minimum parking lot aisle width in one bay and two-bay parking module widths from curved edges of pavement, blah, 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 shall be as follows, and Bill is correct. It looks like the VHB term, V-team interpreted, you know, the requirement of 43 point, 43 foot four inches in a 24-foot aisle, or the total, or one, one section, that would, that would require it to be 19 point, 19.33 feet, instead of 19. I would consider it compliant. I would agree with him. It's not a waiver. It's not standard design practice. It's usually 20, 24, and 20, so that you, if you have double-loaded parking, the 24-foot aisle, it's probably more important than it'd be a 24-foot aisle, two-way, two-bay driving aisle. It's not critical that it's not full 20 feet. Many communities use 9 by 19 parking spaces just fine. I don't consider that to be an issue. So I would agree, from a technical point of view, it is not a waiver. And I think he's adequately, his team's adequately addressed it. Now, if the board would like to have 20-foot parking spaces, deeper parking spaces, you can ask for that, but just wanted to make that clarification.
Okay, yeah, I don't want to get into the weeds of like what is a waiver or what isn't a waiver for those purposes. I was just pointing that as an example to highlight the request for a list of all waivers, which is not in the packet, and which, what we do want.
Yeah, and so I will do that. I apologize. I wasn't going to include that one, that's all.
No, 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 that's fine. I, and, I just want the list.
Okay, I got it.
Um, yeah. So, uh, the, staying, staying in the packet bucket, though, and again, that was just a side point, they didn't need, didn't want for us to go down a tangent here, but staying in the packet bucket, a couple of things that just weren't discussed regarding parking by the board yet, that just are important for the, for the board to note, especially, you know, in the, in the next hearing, or as we get closer to a vote, is that under our regulations, the parking lot itself does technically either have to be in the side or in the back. These are designed to be in the front. That is something, though, that the board can take a vote on to waive.
That's in our regulations.
That's in the special permit regulations, yes.
Okay.
Yep. The board can take a vote on that to waive that, but they have to have a finding that it's for aesthetic purposes, which I think would be appropriate here, given the shape of the lot, as well as the size of the building.
You don't have a copy of the spe, of the special permit regulations with you, do you?
I do, yes.
Okay. Can you look at?
He's referring to section 174-37, which requires parking.
No, that, that would be, that would be the zoning bylaws, Ed. That would be the zoning bylaws, Ed. It's in the regulations. Yeah, it's in the regulations.
Can I borrow that?
Yep.
Copy?
Very good.
So it's, uh, section, uh, sorry, actually, let me pass you the copy, and then I'll give you the citation.
Sorry.
So you can look it up now.
Did, Arden, did you want to comment on this?
It's in, uh.
Okay. I know, it's getting late.
Yeah. Sounds good, thank you.
It's in, uh, I think you'll find it on page 23 in that packet.
So it's, um.
It's section 10B, and specifically, 10B subsection 2.
She doesn't want to talk.
So that would be in Roman numerals, though, so it's IXB.
Mine's the special permit packet.
So we have.
Special permit rules and regulations.
We have the zoning bylaw, right? And then we have special permit regulations. So there, if you need relief from the zoning bylaw, it's one thing. If you need relief from the regulations, it's a waiver. So you know, Karen, we always ask for, any waivers that have been identified need to be put on a, a list, because we vote on them individually. Maybe some towns look at the plans and say, we approve the plans, implying that they're providing a waiver. This board likes them specifically put out, it's to your advantage.
Sure.
Because when the building commissioner starts to look at them, right?
Yep.
It's going to say, wait a minute.
Sure.
They missed that. Well, we didn't miss it. We waived it. So we take a vote before the decision.
Okay.
Anyways, go ahead.
So it's just something that you all would need to make a vote on, and to have that finding in particular, which I think is justifiable in this situation.
So the parking in the front, anything else?
Uh, yeah, then, there's some issue, and we're looking into this, whether or not except, an exception can be made, as well as whether or not it's cost prohibitive to the applicant, but regarding the, the use of Betuminous berm, particularly for the, actually, I kind of wanted to get those back.
All right. I, I think that the, the parking lot trees are in here.
Yeah.
I'm going to have to look for it.
Is that a document I'll have access to?
It's online.
Yeah, it's online.
Our regulations are online.
Okay.
And you can go my.
So it's the Town of Mashpee Special Permit Regulations.
Okay.
And those are the things we can waive by.
So then also in, in that same section, except it's 10A7, technically, all vertical curbs are supposed to be granite or cast-in-place concrete.
Oh.
So, yeah. So there is some Cape Cod berm on these plans, so it's something that we need to look into.
And then, let's keep the in-lot trees on the list.
Sure.
I, I don't have the citation.
And I think those are them. I think those are the three. The vertical berm.
Have you, have you ever thought about?
From a, sorry. From a compliance perspective, again, also that kind of part of that discussion is just theoretical, is 91 spaces enough, even though it, it does comply, you know? But I think Mary came up with a really good solution of having like an MOU with the abutters or something to that.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
Yeah. I got it.
Yes. So you're talking about the, the co, shared parking?
Parking.
Yeah. So we have a business in town, the Knockabout.
Yep.
They were a startup company. We, we were very flexible about the parking, in my opinion, and they outgrew their little parking, I mean, it was already a developed site. Did we want to, did we want to develop it anymore, so close to the pond and everything? No, we didn't. So, but it is obviously, you know, something needs to be done. For example, a lot of people that park there, they actually walk across 130, and, well, they park behind the town hall, or across the street behind the archive building, and then walk over. If we knew that was going to happen at that special permit time, we would have made that crosswalk improvement be part of the, right? Obviously. Or somehow work with the town, and.
Right.
He's come back, I think he's been there 10 years. Has he been there 10 years, maybe? Eight?
Eight.
Eight? Eight? And so he just came back, because there was some stormwater issues, right? And, um, so he just came back, and we just floated that idea. So we have to figure out, right, how, in his capital plan, how we can help us out with that.
Sure, sure.
I forget where I was going. Oh, so this whole thing about, I mean, there is parking down here, right? But you need, if you had a tournament and had to have a shuttle, people, I think people are fine with that, as long as it's planned.
Sure.
With the town. So in that parking, like, agreement or something, you should, you should have a conversation with the town manager's office about how to use that parking. That's public parking, but how to, how to use it in a coordinated fashion.
I understand.
Because nobody wants to cause a problem for a first responder getting to someplace they need to get, and that's the whole point. And, and, and this little bit of, you know, 130 is starting to be a nice little center of activity.
True.
You know, and I don't know if you know this, but the Historical Commission has money from our Community Preservation Committee to do a walk in this area.
Oh, nice. I don't know that.
They, they might move a building from one of our cranberry bogs, they might not, but they got some month, they, they were in their initial stages of asking for funding for a study, to bring a historic building over to where our community gardens are, in that little spot. The town meeting voted to provide land for a tribal-led initiative to reconstruct a village, right? So that's all happening here. So this is great.
Good.
And, sorry, Madam Chair.
I think that's it. Go ahead.
No, there was just one other point.
Time to clock down, starting to ramble.
All right. There was just one other point I wanted to mention, too, which is that I'm glad Ed pointed out, uh, the need for the sweat path analysis, and that's something that we've also put on FD's radar. Um, so it is something that, you know, we should definitely get and have, uh...
Is that the fire truck?
Yeah, the turn radius. Yep.
Yep.
So, and, and, uh, we can, we can loop Ed into that conversation with FD also. I've just kind of initiated an email thread there, so.
So, so, so I will, to my knowledge, the waiver list will include the three things that we've talked about. And I don't know if the third one's a waiver or not, but it'll be on there just for safekeeping. What, four things, right? The parking in the front, right, which was, was a request. The in-lot trees, which I'm not sure if that's a waiver or not. I just have to figure out what you're talking about.
I have to read the regulations.
Yeah, so I will as well. So I'll put the, well, I'll address it, if it is or not. The vertical berm, um, because the Cape, the Cape Cod berm, or, you know, is, is there. It's also there on every lot in the subdivision. And then the parking memorandum of understanding with the details of maybe talk with the town manager and what we can do, not only locally, but maybe broader. So those are the things. I will verify with my civil team if there's anything else. I don't think there is. But those ones are the ones I'll be preparing to bring forward through Brian for, for follow-up discussion. Unless somebody heard something that I needed.
You, you want the list ultimately to come from your engineers.
No, that's what I'm saying. I, I, it will come from my engineers. It will. But, but those are the ones I know about, and those are the ones that will come forward. I don't know of another one, is all I'm trying to say. So if...
But if your engineers do, they should put it on the list.
I agree with you.
I think, and I, I also think our, our special permit regulations are, are far less complicated than the zoning bylaw. The zoning bylaw is very legalese, you know what I mean? The regulations is normal English. You'll, your engineers and you will easily be able to see that.
Right. And there are other permits I need to apply for, like, with the FAA, because I'm so close to the airport. So I'm aware of things.
Get out. Get out. Wow. Oh, because you're over 15 feet?
No, no.
In the crash zone?
Because I'm within a one-mile radius. I think that requires for building, for construction, for construction purposes.
Yeah, there, there is a discreet outline of...
Yeah. So, so I'm aware of those. So my engineering team has provided me a list of those things that I need to provide for permit approval as well. And, and I'm just gonna make sure the variance request details are equally comprehensive.
Yeah, make sure when you go to the FAA that you, you note that you're, you might put solar on top.
Yeah, no, it's, it's within the footprint, but yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
You don't, yeah.
Yep. And just a point on solar, just because we're, you, you mentioned it twice. And so I actually have two quotes for it. It's just cost prohibitive today.
Right.
But I know what it is. And, and one of them is, is the solar company just down, just down the street. Um, that's, you know, I hope that we can work a deal out. But it's, it's just, uh, for what I need to do today, it's cost prohibitive. So, but I do have plans for, for doing such.
I just had a, a quick, for the record pur- purposes, it's a light over, it's a what, light industrial zoned area, right? Uh, retail. There is no identified retail on your plans, other than the restaurant and the tavern. Can you, um, talk about any thought of retail on the premises, or no retail whatsoever?
So I, okay, that's an interesting question.
Isn't there a pro shop?
There's a pro shop. There is a pro shop.
Oh, there is.
Pro shop. So when you look at the entrance, there's a check-in, and right behind the check-in is a pro shop.
I, I, I have the plan. I said, I see all the bathrooms. I see the, I see the putting greens.
Between the bathrooms and the kiosk is the pro shop.
I love that you have, like, your offices upstairs. I thought that was clever use of space.
It's, it's very well-designed.
But there's, uh, no issue with, uh, light industrial being retail as well?
No.
Okay. I just wanted to get that on the board.
And it, you, what you also raise is a bit of an interesting historical point, which I'm sure most of the board members are already aware of, if not all. But, um, this, you, the indoor recreational use, um, in an industrial zone is new. It was passed in this past, uh, 2024, uh, May town meeting.
For this.
Specifically for this project. Yeah. But, uh, you know, I mean, it's kind of a, I mean, it's a really good location for it, you know? A really good location for it.
I'm delighted to be able to bring it to this town. I think it's gonna be great for a lot of people.
That is why I think, though, that this parking discussion is so important from the practical perspective, because it's gonna be popular. It's gonna be very popular.
So, um, if we're all done, I'm gonna open it up to the public. Is there anybody here from the public that would like to comment on this?
Yeah, right, yep.
And then, um, Mashpee TV, can you see if there's anybody on Zoom? How do I do that? Go to participants?
They wouldn't be there.
Or the chat. Yeah, I think they would have been up on, uh, I think they would have been up on the top.
So we just have Karen in.
Yeah.
Okay, let's see. Okay. All right. So, um, you wanna come back to our next meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Which is, if I was, 19?
Nineteen.
Right?
Mm-hmm.
Mary, you know I will be here for the 19th.
Okay. So, I, okay.
Are you gonna sit, Rob?
I'm gonna have to sit, Rob. Are you here with the 19th?
Only on Zoom. You have my list of Zoom participation.
Sorry, not with me. All right. Um... So Brian, can, can I, can I seat Rob at this point?
I guess if it's necessary, yeah. Because you don't want to punt to 3/5.
I, I, I never like taking a vote. Even if everybody's like, "Yeah, we're gonna vote with this," I never like taking a vote with only four members.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna seat Rob Hanson on this matter.
Okay.
Um, you might have to, uh, you, you, you...
I'm gonna be on Zoom.
You're gonna be on Zoom. Okay. If we, if we, if we think we're gonna have a problem, we'll just continue it. Do you know what I mean?
I do.
Okay. All right. So the chair seats Robert Hanson on this matter. Karen, are you okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. So Karen, if you have any, like, thoughts after today, please, uh, send them to the planning board via Brian.
Okay.
Okay. Any questions or concerns? Okay. So seeing that nobody from the public is, uh, um, wanting to provide comment, I would take a motion to continue this meeting, this hearing to February 19th at 7:10.
So, hey.
Any discussion? By rule call vote, Rob?
Uh, yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Yes.
Dennis, yes. Mary, wait, and yes. Michael Richardson said yes. And Karen?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much for your time.
Nice job.
Sure.
I will be here on the 19th. I thought we were talking March.
No.
Oh, okay.
Okay, good.
I'll be here.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you.
Yes.
They're always really easy for us after they've been through the Cape Cod Commission.
Well, this is my Cape Cod Commission.
Oh, that's nothing. You're doing good. You're organized. Okay.
See you in a couple weeks.
Bye-bye.
Follow-up information we talked about.
Sounds great.
Awesome. Thanks, guys.
Okay. So there is a member of the public here. Is it, was there something you wanted to? Okay. Because, just let me know. Raise your hand, um, if you want to talk about anything. Um, okay. Uh, we're, Ed, we're back to you. Board engineer report.
Yes, thank you. Um, I have only two things to discuss. One is Osprey Court. Um, we have been on the site a couple of times. Um, once since our last meeting that we were together. But they have stopped work because of the, uh, problem with thaw. They were having a problem working with thaw last week. Excuse me, working with frost. There wasn't enough thaw. And they were having a problem last week. They actually got a new piece of equipment, and were just going too slow. And Kevin Mahoney from Pasticor Construction told me that he had just wanted to pump until we got a reasonably good thaw. And I told him to give me a call when he was ready, so that we could get out there to inspect it. So, um, all that's left there, really, is a, a, a number of the utilities that are installed.
Yeah.
The water's in, saw, in there. The conduit for electric is there. Some of the structures for the drainages are there and installed, but none of the piping between the structures, drainage structures is installed. He's gonna do that later. He wanted to get the drainage in, especially the catch bases, because it was, um, electric conduit going beside them. And he wanted, didn't want anything to undermine the electric conduit if he did the, the, that later. So, um, he wanted to put the structures in later and undermine the conduit after it turned off to the trouble for the day. So, long story short, he's phasing the work. He's starting the sewer as well. He's starting the sewer work as well. Um, but it's on hold for a short time. I know we've had some warmer weather recently, but not, I guess, consistently warm. Um, but, um, that's, that's one item. Second item is, and Mary, you probably know this from living nearby, project in 474 Main and 31 Ashuman has started.
Oh, yeah, big haul in there.
But they're not planning to build any of the construction, excuse me, any of the drainage work until next week. So folks from Cape Cod Construction called me to schedule, to inform me that they were on-site, starting work. They were getting ready, or kind of clearing some of the brush in the center of the site, getting organized. The site has been staked out by their engineers, so they know where the limit of work is. And I, uh, you know, he's told me he's installed the construction entrance. And so I said, "Well, I'll be there next week, and I can go through that with you on-site in person." So he's got a lot to do before he gets to doing that. But the first thing he'll do, um, on Ashuman Road is he'll start to build that, this small detention basin, infiltration basin, um, near the entrance and work his way back. So that'll be the first thing they start. But again, that has not started just yet. And that's all I have.
I have a question for Ed.
Go ahead.
Osprey Court, Ed, when you're coming out of the development, I thought they were supposed to have, like, gravel to, so that, I'm looking now, and I see a lot of the, the mud and everything getting on the road. Because usually, we haven't put gravel so many feet.
It was there. It was, it's been there all along. It's just, it sounds like, from what you're telling me, recently, um, over the last couple of weeks, it sounds like it's gotten a little bit eroded and, and tracked, which is what happened.
Can't see it anymore. Can't see any of it.
No, you can't see it no more, no.
I'll, I will, I will make it a point to call Kevin Mahoney in the morning and ask him to refresh the construction entrance and to sweep, uh, Great Oak Road there.
Okay, another question. On Kenny Marsters' development near the golf course, there's like three entrances. When you're coming out of the development, you have, you go the right, you go up Old Bostrel Road to 151. When you're coming down Old Bostrel Road from, from, you know, the, um, Great Oak Road north, you go right after the golf course, you go into the project, and then there's a middle lane. But I, what's that middle lane for? You know, because...
When they installed that, when they installed that, uh, both Evan and I were not thrilled. But that is essentially, when you exit the site, when you leave the neighborhood, you have the option of going in the right lane and turning around, going towards 151, or going in the center lane to go left towards 130. Uh, excuse me, towards Great Neck Road. So, um, that's what it's for. It's the two, it's two options to turn left or right exiting the site.
But how do you get into it? How do you get into it?
There's only one entrance, and there's only one entrance, and it's on the other side of the sign. There's an island there that separates the entrance lane and that center lane, as you know. And it's not, shall we say, a very nice design.
Oh, it's horrible.
Not perfect design. Let's just put it that way. And, um, when it went up, I, I called, um, the people involved with installing it. I said, "I'm not sure I'm gonna like that long-term. I understand what you're trying to do. You're trying to just separate the traffic and provide a new, you know, an island for an entrance sign." Uh, but I know that Evan wasn't thrilled with it either. It has been several months since we agreed to have a meeting to talk about it. That's what Evan wanted to do. And it has been several months since that has been brought, uh, forward for that. And I think it's time for, for us to reach out to, um...
Kenny.
The applicant, the developer, to set up a meeting to go over what's going on there.
Good.
Because there was other work that Mr. Marsters had agreed that he would look into, and is basically safety improvements, site distance improvements on the en- on the approaches, on the approach of 151. That's the mo- primary problem.
So Ed, are you willing to, uh, reach out to the developer?
Yes, happy to do that.
Okay. So can we, is it okay with everybody that we send Dennis and Ed out to the site?
Yeah.
And there were, remember, there were plans, hand-drawn plans?
Me and Charlie.
Do we know where those are?
I don't know. Me and Charlie went out there, went to, met Kenny, and we talked about it.
Well, I have, I have design plans that were prepared, apparently, years ago, and, um, for Country Club Estates. That's what we're talking about, the Soren Reno's. Uh, so I will reach out to Mr. Marsters and his team to set up a meeting. What I think would be important is for myself, for Brian, um...
Yep.
You know, uh, for, for the three of us to get together.
That sounds good. It's good for, with everybody. It's Brian, Ed, and Dennis that goes out there?
Sounds good, yeah.
Correct. And we go out, we go out and do a site walk and meet him out there, or meet him in the office, uh, to go over what, what we should do next. And, um, I'm concerned about the approach there and, uh, the approaches there, the safety approaches, the site distance approaches. So this is all prior to my involvement. Obviously, this project's been around for a while, a long time. Uh, but he's now moving forward with the next phase of development.
Way back in the back, yeah.
It's nice. His neighborhood's is nice. The work he does is nice.
At least he could do, Ed, is put, like, arrows, paint arrows, and paint some stop signs. There's no stop sign, and that, people go right out.
That might be enough.
You know?
You know?
At least do that much. So people come in there, they say, "Oh, this is where I gotta go."
I cringe because he's got right angles.
Yeah, but then you have that middle.
On this stone thing. It's, you know what I mean? Like, you know, I'm like, oh, somebody's gonna, like, hit that.
He's, he's got vertical granite curb there that's really, I, I'm surprised it's survived the way it has already.
Yeah.
I mean, if you, go ahead, Karen.
I have a question. I, I know that very well, that you're talking about, how do you make a sight line when you've got that curb and a road like that? I mean, it, it's so dangerous.
The only sight line that I think is, is dangerous is both when you're exiting the site and you're looking to the right towards Route 151.
Yes.
And you don't see the traffic coming until it's right on top of you.
Right.
And the same is true if you are in that, and you're approaching from 151, and you want to turn into the new development, into Country Club Estates.
Yeah.
You also, when you get close to that, you have to slow down, and you can't see the traffic coming from Great Neck Road, or either very well. It's less of a problem if you're in the car. It's more of a problem, I mean, if you're approaching the entrance.
Yeah.
It's more of a problem if you're trying to exit and turn left and not be, you know, in the path of someone driving by. So there's, it, there's two relatively unsafe conditions there, or in my opinion, creepy unsafe conditions, that can be improved. There, um, involves some, some, um, you know, vegetation pruning and tree limbing, perhaps, that is not part of the development. But it is certainly a safety consideration for the development, and I think that's what we should talk about.
Maybe we could put a sign up on, like, 100 feet before you, the entrance, entrance.
Yeah, so, so there, uh, there were traffic.
Oh.
You know, that'll let people know.
Talk about as you approach. Correct. There's signage and, and traffic, painting chevrons on the road. Just, if you, if you put those kinds of things on the, on the road, it slows you down. It makes you think and look at the road, find out what's going on. So...
It's true.
We can talk about that. I, I would be happy to have this consultant give you some, some recommendations. But I think we should just voice our concerns and let them come up with some answers.
Sounds good.
Ed, uh, you, you mentioned that there was, you know, two concerns, the safety. A third that I, I, I use that road quite a bit is coming down, uh, from 151, going around, and the car in front of me wants to take a left in. You don't know that until you're right at, on his backside. You're coming around, and, uh, it's, like, uh, all of a sudden, there's a stopped vehicle right in front of you as you're turning the corner.
Stay around the corner.
Yeah.
You don't see that.
Yeah, I, I've run in, I've almost run into that a few times. I mean, literally, you know, you had, now, you're going, uh, recommended 15 miles an hour, which is, uh, nice if anybody does that. It's, it, the legal speed limit is 30 in that area, even at that curve, because it's a yellow recommended speed limit sign. If you could do something with making that a white 15 mile an hour sign, I think that would be enforceable.
I don't think they'd do the 15, no.
Okay. Um, so, so we're asking Ed to, 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 uh, do some billable hours that aren't associated with any application. So we just have to make sure that the, the, the planning board has the budget to cover his work. I think we do. I think we do.
Well, you, you, we, I have billable time for the Country Club Estates project, right? And we still, I don't know what your budget is for that. I have no idea what it is.
I don't understand why we can't charge.
Okay, all right, all right.
It's still part of the budget.
I did, okay, sorry, I misspoke.
Yeah.
I didn't know.
Yeah, it made it easier for you, that's all. But that doesn't mean it's budgeted for it. I don't know what to do yet.
Well, we can, that, that's an easy answer. We can just check with accounting to see what's on the ledger.
Okay, great. Anything else, Ed?
Nope, thank you.
Thank you, Ed.
Okay, I think you're good. I think everything else is good. Thank you so much for all that work on Island Pickle.
You're welcome. Thank you, everyone.
Now, are you available in two weeks?
Yes, I will be there in person two weeks.
Cool.
I'll be there in person next week.
All right, great.
But I'll be there in person on the 19th.
All right, great.
I can't be there on the 5th of March for Cranberry Point, but, um, I have a conflict in another community, but...
Thank you for reminding. Thank you for reminding me of that, um.
I'll be there on the 19th, and I suspect, uh, Mr. Russell will have all this doc, documentation for me to review.
So, the, any ma, so, um, let's just make sure we have everything from you for any matter that's on March 5th.
Yeah.
Okay. We'll just double check. All right, thanks, Ed.
Hi, Ed.
Hi, all right. So, next on the agenda, the proposed amendment to the ADU bylaw. Okay. So, I put that back in your packet. I read it. I am hoping everybody else did. The red lines?
Yeah.
I read it. I sent everybody some notes today. I, the, the deadline for putting anything on the, uh, submitting anything to the Board of Selakman is Monday, okay? Um, did everybody get my notes?
Yes.
There's a, there's an extra copy over there. Let's see it. It was, it should have been just like on the desk.
Yes.
Erin, would you go over your notes on the ad? Because I'm not understanding. Maybe there's nothing
I was confused, too.
Yeah. Okay. Trying to find the beginning of the, okay. So, we have a red line version of our accessory apartment bylaw, Section 174, 45.4. And we sent it up to town council because, as you know, uh, the state passed the Affordable Homes Act, um, which now the, yeah, it's the Affordable Homes Act. And, um, it, it was a, it was a bond bill, but it had some, um, statute in it regarding accessory dwelling units, and they became a protected use. Um, so anyways, we sent this up to town council to see what we had to change to bring our bylaw, our zoning bylaw, into compliance. So, they start with, um, the de, the definitions that we have to change the meaning of, of, uh, the definition of an accessory apartment to match how the state defines it. So, that's that first big, um, do you guys have this all in your packet?
I had it somewhere.
Yes.
Um, so that's that first one. So, that's, you know, whatever. We can't do anything about that. So, um, they have, um, also in the table of use regulations, replace 8A accessory apartment subject to the provisions of 174, 75.4 with accessory dwelling unit subject to the provisions of 174, 45.4. Okay, so that's the section of the bylaw. So, when we get to, so I think those two things are pretty easy. Right? One's the definition, one is just changing, um, the word accessory apartments to accessory dwelling units, um, in that section. Then when you get to 174, 45.5, a lot of the red lines is just that, changing apartment to dwelling unit. Um, on that first page, it has this, this is where, um, Karen, I start to make notes. Right? There's a section that says, that's redlined. Additionally, a special permit shall be required for the authorization of more than one accessory dwelling unit on a single lot.
Yeah.
Okay? So, I, I saw that as allowing more than one accessory, uh, unit, dwelling unit, on a lot. I'm not sure if we're ready to go to that.
No, I don't want to do that.
So, it's
Erin, could I add something on that? What I wrote after that was, as long as the dimensional criteria, whatever else you need, would allow this. But that's, that's a subjective idea. I mean, I hope if we want to go to more, you're right, to more than one accessory dwelling on the lot.
I, 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 I think because of our clean water initiatives, we should, at this time.
I don't think we should, not at all.
But we should add in there, just to be clear, there shall be no more than one accessory dwelling unit on a single lot.
Okay.
So, that was, that was the note. Okay. Um, then the rest of that page.
I think we got mine.
No, this is mine.
Oh, I have. I think we were here before.
See, you guys, your red line is more like a yellow line. I don't know why, but anyways, all right.
All right, I got this. I just look at my red line.
Yeah, right. Um, okay, so the rest on that page is, um, they said the next whole section has to be taken out. On page two, it's a lot of changing apartment to dwelling unit. And then, uh, then C, which eventually will be back to B, right, because I have it as C, but I think you guys have it as B?
Yeah.
Okay. So, let's just skip the first paragraph, go to the second paragraph. It, it defines what gross floor area is. So, that's a good insertion. Right? This, I think it's, I think it's gray on yours, okay? All right. But that first paragraph, that's where I have some notes on it. I think that the first line, the apartment should be changed to dwelling unit. The structure as the owner's home should be the single-family home, right? But instead of where it starts to talk about the gross floor area, right? The minimum and the maximum.
Yeah.
I was talking to Brian, and we thought that maybe that should be broken up into two sentences. Right? And that's on my notes. The first sentence would be, "The gross floor area of the accessory dwelling unit shall be not more than 400 square feet unless the gross area of said structure is 800 square feet or less, in which case the minimum gross square area, uh, gross, gross floor area of the accessory dwelling unit, not plural, shall not be less than 300 square feet."
Yeah, no, so, we, we, we were having ongoing conversations, uh, with town council almost up until this meeting. Uh, so, what I'm going to do is recommend two slight changes to this paragraph,
Yes, go ahead.
which I think would, uh, clarify things. Um, uh, first, well, actually, I'll just recommend, I'll just recommend the one change. After 800 square feet or less, put a strike through that starts from "in" and goes until the end of the sentence. So, basically, you're taking out, "In which case the minimum gross floor area of the accessory dwelling unit shall be not less than 300 square feet." So, if you just put a line through that.
Mm-hmm.
Right?
Okay.
And so now it would read, "The gross floor area of the accessory dwelling unit shall be not less than 400 square feet unless the gross floor ar," I think that's supposed to be floor area, not gross area, "of said structure." That's the primary, the "said structure" is referring to the primary dwelling. Is 800 square feet or less, period.
Period. Okay, so, add in between the words gross and area, the word floor.
That was the second change. I just wasn't 100%. Wanted to make sure, since there's a definition of gross floor area, so.
Okay, so, add this sentence. "The gross floor area of the accessory dwelling unit shall not, shall be not less than 400 square feet unless the gross floor area of said structure is 800 square feet."
Or less, period.
Oh, it's gonna work out?
Yes.
You don't need the second phrase on that sentence because it will, the math will just work out.
Right.
Okay. The next
I don't figure out what we would do.
No. Okay. Who thought there was so much math? It's like word problems. It's not even like math. It's not even fun math. It's word problems, okay? Then the second sentence is, "The gross floor area of the accessory dwelling unit shall be not more than 50% of the gross floor area of said structure or 900 square feet, whichever is smaller on the date of the building permit application is filed." Now, this might be something that the AG will kick back.
The first sentence.
Yeah.
Not the second.
Okay.
And the question is whether or not we can get an Assistant Attorney General to review, um, a draft bylaw before the
Right.
public hearing on it.
The other thing you can do is the contra, well, the, the questionable sentence is put in a separate, um, warrant article.
Right. Yeah. But the, 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 if, if you all recall, the building inspector was here at a prior meeting, and his concern is the updated building code. And this does happen with state laws. There's a ton of state laws all being updated kind of simultaneously. And the building code has new provisions for tiny houses, which by definition are 400 feet or less. And my understanding per the building, uh, commissioner is that, um, there's less safety measures and check-offs and inspections associated with these smaller units. So, in order to have those concerns addressed within the context of this new state law, which puts a maximum, uh, size on, um, the as-of-right ADUs, you were putting in a 400 square foot minimum. Yeah, it is, you put in a 400 square foot minimum, but you can't do that if the house, you know, in the very rare instance that the house, which is the primary dwelling, is 800 square feet or less, because you have to allow it to be 50%. Does that make sense? And 400 is 50% of 800. Right? All right. Lots of math.
So, you guys good with that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. D, which is, I think, I'm sorry, that, your C, okay?
My C.
Your C, um, I think that's, you know, change of apartment to dwelling unit, and that you're striking the maximum of two bedrooms in an accessory apartment because, um, the state has some provisions for three-bedroom accessory apartments. So, dwelling units, so we can't do that.
Now, on that thing, though, that has to, the septic system has to go with that.
Oh, yeah. We are not, yep.
They would have to put a whole new septic system to get a three-bedroom to, you know, accessory apartment.
Mm-hmm. There's some provisions that, for communities to opt into more than one ADU on the site. And it's, I think, the, the second ADU, doesn't it have to have three bedrooms? There's, there's some, there's some regulations, and maybe they didn't survive, but, um, so
I do know on the final regulations, but this is applicable here because we struck through it, the communities do have the option for a special permit for any additional ADU.
Yeah.
But I'm not sure about that.
So, um, but that's okay. I mean, that's all right. Um, uh, the nu, the, the next paragraph, which is F, again, strike apartment, put in dwell, dwelling unit. Okay, E is about parking. That brings it up to code with the, in compliance with the state statute, um, that notwithstanding the provisions of 174, 39, I'm sorry, I don't know what that is. "At least one off-street parking space shall be provided for accessory dwelling units more than half a mile away from a transit station." So, if you're near a, a transit station, you cannot, the town or the city cannot require that the accessory dwelling unit has an off-street, off-street parking spot.
And we do not have
We don't have transit stations. Remember, we submitted comment that we didn't want that to apply along the whole bus route? It looks like that, that
Oh, yeah, right.
they listened to us. Um, KP Law put that in, Tony Yarmuth put that in. I think it was, everybody was like, no way. Because some of our bus routes go into pretty rural areas, so, what I consider rural. Okay? Next one, just cha, just strike apartment to dwelling unit. That's your paragraph. F, kind of the same thing in G. Um, you know, strike apartment to dwelling unit. But there's also this highlighted note about short-term rental.
Oh, yeah, what about?
Question mark. So, that's not really, that's a comment from town council. Did you want to address short-term rentals at this time? And I think when we went to town meeting, remember, we asked to restrict them to six, at least to six-month period. I think that for us to really address short-term rental limitations on ADUs, um, we might want to have a workshop with those neighborhoods that have ADUs in them. Um, I wouldn't want to bring it to, what do you think, Rob? I wouldn't want to bring it to town meeting without getting some public input first because that idea went down in flames.
It went down in flames because the vote was those that had a vested interest in not having that fa, phrase in there. But I, I, I was a, a, opposed to not having it pass, uh, in town.
I think that's something that we can get ready for October. I don't think we'll have this ready for this time.
You have to have a lot of people in the room to
Yeah.
o, offset the vested interests in not having a time limit on the, uh, short-term rental.
Yeah.
I don't think we should have a time limit.
I mean, there's truthfully, many people in there.
I tell a couple of bobbies for people that go to Woods Hole.
Two hundred of them.
And they come out for one month or two months. To, and they need a place to stay. And I know ladies that do that all the time now. Every time a professor or somebody comes up, maybe, sometimes they're even there for two or three weeks. You know, but if, we can't limit that, you know? I mean, people go, you know, make sure. There's no term limit.
Right. So, let's, let's put that in the parking lot. We'll bring that back up. I think that maybe when we get our group together about raise and replace, we can add that on to see how people feel. I mean, there are some people who are really badly impacted. Um, and you can, you can, uh, do a district for that. Do you know what I'm saying? You don't have to cover the whole residential district.
Yeah. Because it flies in the face of, uh,
I think we're not yet.
You know, seasonal workforce housing, too.
Yeah.
So, you know, if you're damned if you do, you're damned if you don't.
Yep. Okay. So, I'm not going to put anything in for short-term rentals? Okay. And H is to strike it because that was the thing about, we did have something for a period of at least 30 consecutive days.
Yeah.
Town council's saying that's no longer. You have to use the short-term rental thing. You can't use that anymore. We have to strike that.
So, we're striking all this?
Yeah, that's what they're saying. I mean, I'm assuming that's what it means. We asked them to update it compared to what the state just passed, and they, they struck it. Um, I, again, apartment to dwelling unit. J, again, apartment to dwelling unit. K. Okay, pre-existing legal units. The rights and requirements of this bylaw hereby transfer any property owner who has constructed or has been granted the rights to construct an accessory dwelling unit under a special permit from the Board of Appeals prior to the adoption of this bylaw. Okay. An accessory dwelling unit created by special permit under the prior version of Section 174, 45.4, which meet the definition of an ADU contained in this current version, shall automatically be converted to an ADU hereunder. Okay? And you see in yellow the reason for that, and it was a very clever catch by them. The reason for this is that the language would be consistent with the draft regulations under 760 CMR, which is a, a state, is it state regulation? 71034, and would avoid the scenario of property owners with an 800 square foot accessory dwelling unit from asserting that it may also have a 900 square foot ADU by right under the ADU. So, that was a really clever catch. So, I think we should go for it.
All right.
But we won't have the yellow. The yellow can be part of the explanation. and then the next one. I don't understand this too much, Brian. The provisions of 174, 17 shall not a, apply to an alteration, enlargement, structural change, or reconstruction of legally existing non-conforming, single-family structure for the purpose of creating a, an ADU.
I think what they may be trying to get at is you can't take your primary dwelling unit which which would be non-conforming now because it's too small, make that your ADU and then build a bigger house.
Oh. Holy smokes, that's clever too. So we don't have to include the highlighted area afterwards, right? That's just kind of like their notes to us?
That's the explanation, yeah.
Okay, so that might be the explanation. So I think we should, we, Karen, how do you feel? I think we should add that provision of 17417 shall not blah, 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 blah.
Yes, great.
Okay. All right. So that's K.
Take all this out?
Well, it's not, it's not a zoning bylaw. It's an explanation to us, which Brian can use as the explanation to the warrant article. Or we have it in our back pocket, or we put it on a flyer at the desk when people check in at town meeting, right? All right, the next one is L. Again, strike apartment, put in dwelling units. It has a little bit more at the end. The state environmental code Title V, failure to comply with all pertinent state and local laws and regulations shall result in forfeit of the accessory dwelling unit and/or the removal of the unit or reconstruction of the unit to achieve compliance. Okay? Oh gee, they struck septic flow capacity. Because it's not our jurisdiction. All right, does that sound good?
Yeah.
Okay. So, this is due Monday. So, first of all, we get. Well, that's what I'm looking, I'm looking at, Brian, you're not in the room. So anyways, so we got to loop the building commissioner in, right? Because the building commissioner put a memo into the town manager's office for the select board, saying that they, they, he recommended the 400-square-foot minimum, which I think we have in here. And then we have to notify them that we have this. So typically, what happens is it's a, it's a drafted warrant article. I think if we can't get that done by Monday, we send a memo with the redlined version of it and then work on the warrant article. But it's up to Brian and his time, his workload right now.
A lot of stuff due on Monday. We can, we can shoot for it. But if we don't get to the wording that we like by Monday, then yeah, I would agree with that.
Well, we've got the wording, right? It's as a red line.
No, I mean for the warrant article.
Warrant article is a little trickier.
Yeah, I mean for the warrant article.
So why don't I draft up the memo with the red line on it?
Okay.
And then you can review it for me.
Sure.
Does that sound good?
Yeah.
You review it and send it in. You know what I mean?
So we're not going to do draft warrant articles then for it?
I don't know, I don't do draft warrant articles. I can do a red line.
Okay.
So I think that's enough to get us on, you know, a placeholder, they call it.
Sure.
I just think that we need a little bit more time to write the warrant article.
Do we have to have a public hearing, John?
Oh, yeah, are you guys fine with authorizing the chair to set a date for the public hearing? You want to take a vote?
Sure.
So I'd accept a motion that the chair, that the, the board authorizes the chair to set the date of the public hearing regarding this proposed amendment to the zoning bylaw. The first and second by roll call vote. Rob?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
And Mary Wagon, yes.
What are you thinking about? What time possibly?
You know, we just, I, 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 I don't know. I mean, as soon, as soon as we can, I, I honestly, off the top of my, 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 off the top of my mind, I don't know what the, if we have to give a two or three-week notice in the newspaper, right? And the ad has to be in by Wednesday for it to be published by Friday. So I haven't done that math calculation on the calendar. But I, what I want to do is have it as soon as possible, so that if there's any, after the public read this, if there's any tweaks they'd like to see, we have time to tell the select board about it. There's, we've got plenty of time to do that, but if we wait, 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 and have it at the last moment we can have it, then we have no, the warrant's already been set and published, and we can't make any changes unless we make them on the floor.
Yeah.
And that always gets messy.
That's right.
Okay. So Karen, when are you back?
Let's see. Just a second. The 19th is a Wednesday. I'm not here, so it's, I will be back the week of, after the 19th. Well, I don't have my calendar, so what do I mean?
Okay, so you're back in February. So you're, you're back from the March meetings.
Yes, I'll be there certainly for the March meeting.
Are you here for the, the second Wednesday in March?
Yes. I'm not going anywhere after.
Okay. And then Rob, are you here the second, the third Wednesday in March? You here the first Wednesday in March?
No, all March's gone.
Do you mind if we have the public hearing without you?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Have a great time.
You're not going to be crying in your margarita? All right, all right, good, so thank you. All right, so new business, we have an anti-discrimination and harassment policy. We need to sign it. I think there's a form. We can just all sign this, the same form.
Okay.
All right.
Nothing else to sign it.
No, it's not on the policy itself. There's a group form that we're going to pass around. Print your name and sign.
Yes, Karen, go ahead.
Sign this and send it in to
Great.
human resource. Is that all, is that what you're signing?
That's all you need to do. Yep, thank you. I also am going to skip to conflict of interest training reminder. So every two years, the state requires people that are on boards and committees, elected officials included, to do a conflict of interest training. Mm-hmm, you do it online. Now, last time we did it, we gave them our email, right? And instead of us having to, you know, print out the piece of paper, sign it, and give that to the town clerk, it's all, they have a database now. They see when you've taken the training, and they are supposed to make that information available so the town clerk can go and check that we're done, right? So these emails were all supposed to go out in January, okay? So, some of my emails, you know, some of my email accounts got that notification and some did not. So you wanting to check your junk mail, et cetera. If, so if, like, I, I did my training two years ago. I know they went to that electronic system two years ago. So look for something from the.
HR?
It's not from HR, it's from the AG's. I think it's the AG's office. I think it's the Attorney General's office that does conflict of interest.
Yeah, or the Ethics Commission. That's one of the two.
Oh, okay.
268A is often the Ethics.
It's the Ethics Commission. So.
Mail, how do you find it?
So what I'll do, so I'd see, I did not get it at my work. If you're an employee, you're supposed to get it too. I never got anything from my work. And they were going crazy at work, looking for it, trying to figure out why. A huge, a huge number of staff people never got that email. And there was, most people did, but there were few that were left off. But I got it to my Hotmail account, but not my Gmail account. So I will, I will send you a screenshot of, of what the title is. That, and hopefully that can help you find it in your own accounts.
Haven't seen it.
Right. I'm just signing this. Okay. Then, resources and schedule for a review of HPP and the LCP. So I have no, I have no update on the LCP, except we got some feedback from the Cape Cod Commission that we didn't hit their.
The target.
We didn't hit their goals and priorities.
I told you that.
I went to an LCP meeting at the town of Yarmouth, and it all had to do about, you have to talk about growth management. You have to talk about growth management. And I think that's the piece we were missing, because we were kind of like, oh, we kind of like being at 15,000 people in town, right? So anyways, I haven't done much work, much more on that. I'm hoping to carve out some time, you know. Oh, just want to let you know if, you know, Brian has all of that Island Pickle stuff electronically. This is, is it Amy?
It's Amy, yeah.
Amy, and are you going to be covering the planning board?
Yeah.
Yeah. So if you need any better visuals for that story, just email Brian. All right, bye.
Bye. Good job.
So the HPP, we have 30 hours of technical support through the county for housing. And it's, it's Barrett Planning Group, the people that drafted up the HPP. So I'm hoping at our next meeting, we, we went down the HPP. I haven't met with Brian on it. We were at the obstacles to housing. Remember, like, I wanted it to say no land, polluted water, you know what I mean? And they put it in a very different way. They were kind of like, lack of infrastructure, you know? And I'm like, no, it's because our pond is green, you know, and stuff like that. But anyways, I, I'm hoping that everybody, you know, looks at the HPP. We stopped at that time and asked you to think about what we, how we should, we could leave the next section alone or change it.
I would just leave it alone. I mean, we did all that, you know.
I was thinking of kind of leaving the titles alone.
Yeah. Maybe a little.
Okay, and maybe, maybe make it a little bit, some of that language is, needs to be a little stronger. I mean.
It does.
Just saying, you know, you don't, you, you lack wastewater infrastructure. I mean, you really, really should be saying that, you know, we, we have floating mats of algae, you know? I really think that the people up at the state that are pushing housing need to look at the pollution that it caused here. Because let's face it, the vast majority of development on the Cape was residential. And if they want us to do more residential, then, you know, they have to help us with the wastewater.
The problem is where to stop. You can, you can go on and on and on, and that, you know, you'll miss something.
Yeah.
But either way.
Anything else on those? Okay. And then the chair's report is I, I've been trying to meet with Brian at, at least once a week. And so we went, we got down to the to-do list and haven't gotten to the HPP and the LCP. But we got through this meeting, which was like huge. Yep, no ANRs or anything?
No.
Thank you, all right, good.
There's a potential special permit, I think, application coming up, but it's not, the application isn't complete yet, so it's not officially in.
So has, here, perfect timing. How about your report?
Yeah, I just put some relatively benign stuff on there. It's more just kind of internal office dynamics, just a friendly reminder to, you know, it doesn't apply to the board members as much, but more to the public and to applicants and consultants and whatnot who are working on projects with us, that it would be very helpful to have everything in the Wednesday before the planning board meeting, so I can ensure I get everything out to the board members the Friday afternoon before the planning board meeting. Some lag time to compile everything, make sure it's all in logical order, finalize the agenda, you know, get the agenda into the clerk's office in a timely fashion, and then get everything out to the planning board. So it's really, really important. If we get reports or supplements to applications or anything else like that after that Friday, like on a Monday or on a Tuesday, you know, or even sometimes the day of, you know, we appreciate the enthusiasm of applicants and everybody involved to want to get that information and make sure it's in front of the board. The reality of it is, is without that weekend, there's just kind of no guarantee the board's going to be able to review things. And it also causes us internally in the department to kind of spin our wheels and try and keep track of everything. So we just want to be organized, we want to be proactive, not reactive. Get everything in the Wednesday, a week ahead of time, before the planning board meeting. You know, we're, we're being nice about it in the beginning, but at some point in time, if you don't have it in by then, it's just not getting in front of the board. Like, that's just the policy we're going to have to have.
It is, it's only fair. Chrissy, we're going to be looking to you to get your minutes as soon as possible. What I, what I didn't realize was that they, they use your minutes to do the next agenda. Do you know what I'm saying? It's a tool. And when, when Tom was consulting town planner, that's what he, that was, that's what he was doing. So your minutes are just so valuable for the, to figure out, make sure we don't miss anything. So we'll be looking, we'll be looking to you.
This agenda item isn't for you specifically. We didn't put it on because you were not even close to being the worst culprit. You were way ahead of a lot of people, so.
I see a raise coming up.
I know, Mary. Um, I know, and then I've been encouraging Brian to make sure the applicants bring us enough paper copies and enough large. I don't think the, 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 what do you call it? The regulations, I don't know, they ask for 18 copies.
14.
14, we don't need that, but.
It's too much.
You know, I know, I like a full set of plans. Karen likes a full set of plans. Dennis, do you? Is there anybody else that wants a full set of plans?
No, it's good to have them.
Okay, that's four. Okay. So, no, and some people like the 17, 11 by 17. Then there needs to be a full set of plans in the office for the public to look at. And then there needs to be one for our records. So that's six. The, the project proponent today sensed, I don't know if you saw that, that, no. They, they sent it to just Brian and myself. It was a whole bu, it was a whole bunch of stuff for today, at 3:30 today.
He was good about getting the printed-out hard copies. And I do have them here, like, and he was also good about, like, he originally was submitting everything electronically and then, but as soon as we asked for hard copies, like, he got them, yeah. And so even the stuff he submitted today, I just didn't want to hit you guys all with more stuff on top of everything.
I printed mine in the afternoon when I got them.
We knew there wasn't going to be a vote tonight, so it's like, why not give it to you at a time where you can process it as opposed to, you know, right at the hearings?
So we're gonna, I also brought to, I just want to let you know, I was lambasted at the charter review meeting. There was public comment on me and pub, about public comment. I was basically, you know, accused of killing demarc, local democracy and stuff like that. So what I did was I, I let Brian know that there was, there's a procedure on our website about how to submit comment to the planning board, so I'm hoping he can look at it and, you know, give some suggestions. It, it might be something that we, we need to talk to town council about. But I don't want things to get
Out of control.
Right, disrupted. And I'll tell you, having somebody attack you personally at the beginning of every meeting is, it's very hard to, we concentrate and do all of that. I mean, you saw what we were doing. We were doing Zoom and dealing with executive session and this and that and the other thing. And if you come in here already rattled, it's, it's very difficult. And I see it as something that disrupts the proper functioning of the board. And that's the, that's the job of the chair, is to make sure the board runs properly. So, and I, I, I love it when people come and talk to us. We just need to have a little bit of professional decorum. I know sometimes people get nervous, and they're passionate and everything, but we do not need to attack each other personally. We need to leave that all out of it. So anyways, I guess we'll be talking more about that. Okay.
Do we have a office for you? Last time I was here, you were in a conference room. Do you have a home?
So that, for the time being, is my office, but it's, it's both the conference room and an office. Behind the conference room is an office. Usually when I have guests, we sit at the table so we can spread out the large plans, so we'll.
You're in the same location.
Yeah, yeah, my office is attached to and just behind that conference room, so.
It's actually not a bad spot.
No, it's actually a really nice spot.
It's a really good spot.
I kinda don't want to move.
Do not move.
I'd like to see you, Brian, that you weren't, weren't in the office.
Oh, yeah.
And I looked, I go, this is small, then I looked at, I go, oh, this ain't bad.
This is nice, yeah.
The inner office has windows, it's,
I kind of like that too, you know, it's kinda,
Don't have much storage, so, you know, shelf space.
No, and the, those, those records are the community preservation committee's records. So don't box them up.
I won't, I'll try not to, I'll just stick them up in the attic where they'll,
No, don't stick them up in the attic!
Of course not, I wouldn't touch them, I would never touch them.
I know, so we'll work out a plan for that. All right, board member, oh, let's see, um, what's going on with the tree bylaws?
Oh, no, I just wanted to, again, an announcement, to the extent, uh, anyone's still listening, is, uh, that temporarily, until we're fully staffed up in my department, Tammy Down in Building is, uh, fielding the initial intake for the, uh, tree preservation bylaw application. So when you wanna, uh, submit for either a permit, you have to submit a plan, and you want to get either a permit or a waiver for the, uh, tree preservation bylaw. So she's gonna, uh, she's still just kinda catching those. And the only reason I mention that is because I've been getting some phone calls along that, which obviously I'm happy to field and answer questions, but you just want to know the first stop is still going to be Building, probably until about late March, uh, when we're staffed up.
Okay, anything else? Good. All right, board member and commi- board member committee reports. Cape Cod Commission, I think I told you guys, they're doing the update to the regional policy plan. Right, so stay tuned. I'm, I'm, I don't know if they've contacted you, I'm assuming they're gonna come to us or invite us to some type of Zoom event. They're our regional planning commission, um, you know. Maybe I'll follow up on that?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Charter review committee, um, we, I think it's in your packet. In the packet, there are draft warrant articles that you will see my handwriting. Nope, that's the, oh, it's redlined, here it is.
Redlined.
Sorry. Okay, so these are not the warrant articles, but they are a red line of the changes to the charter thus far, plus, the preamble.
Right.
Which, um, I don't know if I ever sent that to you, and maybe I did, a long, long time ago, it was in your, uh, okay, good. So that's gonna be on the warrant, these are gonna be on the warrant, and then, um, inclusion, uh, inclusionary language. So changing wherever it says the Board of Selectmen to Select Board, because we formally changed the name of that body to Select Board. And also, there's a couple of spots where it says he. And so, um, Stephanie Coleman and Kathy West are working on either putting in they or he, she, they, or putting in the, yeah. So you will, you will see a little bit of that.
Zoe.
And, all right, so there's that. And I don't know when the, oh, the public hearing is, I think, March third. I'll send you the notice once I have it. And please come, even if it's, even if your stuff is not on the, um, the warrant, please use it as an opportunity. I know that everybody is passionate here about whether the town clerk should be changed to appointed. It's a good time to come to the public hearing on that, and your suggestion,
What's the date?
I think it's gonna be March third.
Yeah.
That's on Monday. I don't have my calendar with me, sorry. And, um, it's the Monday of that week, the first week.
What time is it at?
It'd probably be at six thirty.
Right.
Yeah. And then, um, your suggestion that allowing, uh, people who are already on a committee or an elected official to be on another committee. I talked about, um, like, if, like, if that vacancy was for six months, then that type of appointment can happen. Back in the day, a lot of elected officials were at, were appointed to other boards and committees. And people thought there should be more opportunities. Right? Now we have a vacancy issue on our boards and committees, and we have people that will gladly serve on another committee.
Well, I was elected to two, two boards, the store commission and the planning board. And I had to get off one of them, but I was elected official, I wasn't appointed.
Yeah.
So I got off the store commission, I stayed on the planning board. But, you know,
If that's, that's also another comment to make, that maybe we can be elected to more than one thing.
Yeah.
I don't know. I mean, it, anyways.
Yeah.
So that's, that's gonna be important. Community preservation, that's the one, you have the draft warrant articles, it has some changes. The only thing that was not, um, a unanimous vote was the money for the, um, playground at, um, Leclerc Village.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. So what happened was, oh, this, this, I think this may not, what happened was, the first request was three hundred and ten thousand. Then they got, uh, a non-binding commitment of a hundred thousand dollar donation from Linda Zammer.
Yeah.
Yeah, she's so nice. But I had wanted the, uh, people who own it and manage it, which is preservation for affordable housing, to, to,
Yeah, correct.
Split, split it up as a loan and a grant. Now, they do financing day and night, right? That's what they do. And they didn't come with terms for the loan. So they were amenable to a loan, but they didn't come up with, you know, okay, we could start paying in fifteen years. This is the interest we want to pay, all that kind of stuff. So I voted against it, because I didn't think it was ready. So, anyways. Okay. Who's next? Design review.
No meeting.
Okay. Plan review. Environmental oversight committee.
Uh, yes, we met, and we, um, had a special guest. We had Paul Bebo, the Chair of the Mashpee Wakeby Lake Management Committee. And, and we approached them about, um, changing to the Mashpee Freshwater Committee to cover all the ponds in Mashpee. We got there well, it's, so the Mashpee Wakeby Lake Management Committee is the only, like, official town committee for a freshwater body in Mashpee, there's no, uh, for example, there's no Santuitt Committee that we have. There are, there are groups in town that are supportive of those different ponds, but no official, uh, town committee. And, um, so we approached them about basically taking on that added responsibility. And, um, the initial thought was that they don't have the capacity. So,
Oh.
We're still, go to Plan B.
You might have to just initiate a pond committee?
Yeah, yeah, that's what,
Where, do you have one member from each pond?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. So, um,
It's a great idea. It really is a great idea, I think you should keep working on it.
Yep, we'll keep working on that, and, um, we finalized our, the, uh, EOC, um, committee, uh, vision, goals, and mission statement finally.
Excuse me.
So we're, um,
Anything with the open space plan?
Um, no.
Did an RFP go out?
Uh, no.
Okay. I have a lot of misinformation about that.
Ma'am, I missed a meeting in between, so I have to,
Typically, it's, it's, it's managed by the town planner. But there's already two plans ahead of it, all right. That's great. I am on some email list for that. Yeah. Historic district.
No meetings.
Okay.
And Brian, you know about the historic committee, right?
Yeah.
You set the plan, you know, the meetings up and stuff.
Yeah.
If anything comes in.
Yeah, nothing's coming in.
Okay.
Also in your packet, you can say it's for correspondence, there's the capital improvement program summary. Okay? It's important to look at the funding source, which is the last column. Um, wherever you see a debt exclusion, right? Right? So, on page one, thirty-seven million dollars, police station renovation, debt exclusion. Okay? There's a lot of debt exclusions this year. Under wastewater, there's one for two hundred thousand, two point five million, two hundred and fifty thousand, and twenty-four million. Not enough free cash. So just look those over. That's, that, this is one step to get it on the warrant.
October, right?
No.
Or May?
May. Right, because they're doing the budget right now, right? So these go on there, and I, and now, isn't it true, these have to be followed by, debt exclusion has to be followed by a vote at the ballot?
Yeah. Oh, yeah, right.
So it's that, that, that type of vote, you have to have a positive vote. I think it's just, it's not two thirds, I think it's just majority, right?
Yeah.
At, at town meeting, and then a ballot vote. So, look at that carefully, and that's all I have. Karen, do you have anything?
No, I don't.
Anybody else have anything?
No, I make a motion adjourned.
Okay.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, okay.